John, it's just Sean doing an audio test.
Yep, I got you.
Thank you so much.
Well, I think I'm the only one that's working right now. That the June 6, 2023 agenda be adopted as presented.
Perfect. I will call for the vote. Council Mackay?
Yeah, it just popped up.
All right, that motion passes unanimously. We do have a couple of registered speakers. We have, I was gonna say Council Watkins, but Ray Watkins speaking at about Council Remuneration, but he's going to wait till we get to the agenda item. We have Leanne McCabe. Is that you, Leanne? Thank you for joining us. She's gonna talk about storm line on her property. And then we have Mr. Ken Cuthrill speaking about a few different things. So we'll go with you first, Leanne. And I think we're aware of your topic because I asked to have the right staff in the room so we could help you out. So thank you for joining us. This is your first time in council chambers?
Yes.
Yeah, we try to make it really easy and welcoming. So please feel free, don't be nervous. We give speakers around five minutes. So go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Leanne McCabe. About us, we purchased this 1958 bungalow at the end of June 2021, 57 Mission Avenue, St. Albert, with a single car garage 24 feet by 14 feet. We had to remove, we had to remove the new garage or the old garage so the drainage ditch could be installed at a cost of $1,500, or the city said they could not replace the drainage ditch. We also moved an eight by 10 shed and installed basement waterproofing and sump pump to protect the house from future flooding. Problem. What am I, what am I hoping can be done? Number one, I would like to see the drainage ditch replaced, or at the very least, the cracks repaired in the more, in a more permanent way. Sorry, I'm nervous. We were promised that the drainage ditch should last at least 50 years. Number two. Number two, if we could have an outside engineering company assess the quality of cement for this ditch, as this was a big expense to us as well. We do not want to have the trench redone in a few years after we have put up a fence and replaced the garage. We had to tear it down so the city can replace the drainage ditch. I've never seen so many cracks in a newly poured cement at six months old after installation. We want to put up a fence this year and a garage in two years. So we just want to make sure this drainage ditch is not faulty in any way. If number three, can some gutters on the streets be planned for install when the road is due to be replaced? Our drainage ditch flows out onto the main Mission Avenue street. Um, and it also goes into the manhole because of missions above ground drainage. It floods the front street, causing issues for traffic to the street. The picture of the street is after a very light rain, but it usually is very much deeper, deeper and can be quite a safety issue. As you can see from the repairs done just last week at the back of the property, these are not small cracks. One of the things I noticed when reviewing the the um, if, sorry, when reviewing the website, that there is no ASP or no ARP for our property in Mission. It falls along the border of the Riverside ASP and the downtown ARP. According to the City of St. Albert content on neighborhood level planning, an ASP is intended to designate land uses, lay out pedestrian and vehicular circulation routes, provide for opportunities to assign population densities and identify utility services needed for the area in question. There is a critical gap in city planning that has led to utility challenges within the area as it relates to drainage utilities in particular. Without an ASP, drainage regulations for the property in question will have to be informed by the City of St. Albert's MDP zoning bylaw and the surface draining bylaw. The MDP lists resilient infrastructure as part of its citywide policies. Please review the policy of page sixty-six seven that states the city's commitment to update servicing standards, including storm water management standards to account for ongoing climate change impacts. The MDP also provides guidance as it relates to storm water management. Here, the plan identifies the following principle, ten point five storm water management principle. The city then has a responsibility to manage the drainage ditch in order to protect the property in question. Importantly, drainage is not addressed effectively with the ND, MDP policies, with the term drainage mentioned only once within the plan. There are many uh other areas in Mission that have drainage issues. But you know, we have to go through insurance because that's the only plan that is in place right now. This again is a critical gap within city planning documents that must be addressed moving forward. This will become increasingly important as climate stressors worsen, prompting more extreme rainfall and flood, which raises the need to consider drainage within city strategy plans and policies. With little mention of drainage within the MDP, we must now turn to the land use bylaw to determine whether guidance on drainage can be attained from this more ground, ground under planning tool. The land use bylaw regulations around residential justics list the following policy as it relates to drainage. Please see the following.
You have about thirty seconds left, Leanne.
Okay.
Yep.
So in summary, there is no ASP drainage for St. Albert in Mission. There's no, we have, and we're one of the oldest neighborhoods. We have overhead power lines. We have, you know, above ground drainage. Um, I originally contacted Mika and we have, we got just the exact identical drainage ditch, except it's smaller. So this is the original drainage ditch. As you can see, it feels quite full and they made the new one smaller. Um, it floods the streets. So this is my email asking her if she could look at alternative methods, and this was her response. Um, this is the shed and the garage that had to be pulled down. This is the drainage dish that flows into the street. This is the the repair that they did. Um, what I want you to know, being ignored by Mika Seon King on two occasions was very frustrating and made us feel helpless after we complied with her requests to have the drainage ditch repaired, removed the garage shed and fence so that a new drainage ditch could be installed. We allowed access to our property. She moved the drainage dish over four inches, no notification. Um, at the very least, this was very inconsiderate. Um, the old drainage dish was made out of side up block blocks and the sidewalks were caving in. During heavy rainfalls, the water in the street gets very deep and it is a safety issue. So, and I realize I am.
Yeah, I I try to keep people on time just to be fair to everyone. So is there, is there a, this is just for information, or is, did you have an ask of the of council?
I would ask that they do an ARP for our area and that they look at drainage and that that especially in the front of our street. And like I originally asked for some kind of storm drain for our, we're at the very bottom of the hill. So we take on the brunt of the full Mission Hill.
Okay.
And I feel like our two properties are kind of like the sacrificial lambs to the storm drains. So I know that they, we've all had our our sewer lines replaced, so I would imagine the ones in the front on the city line also need to be replaced. So maybe at that time, if something could be looked at to take the water away from the the street. Because as people go through it, it's their, the traffic gets backed up. It gets quite dangerous.
All right, so your ask is big and redevelopment is a big undertaking and probably a million dollars, but um, but I I get what you're saying. I made sure that we had some engineers specializing in storm here to answer some questions, which we'll get to. But before that, uh, I see councillor Hughes has a question.
Hi, thanks for coming. So I just want to make sure I clearly understand everything that's going on here. So with the repairs that happened last week, those cracks, I agree, are quite substantial. Are you satisfied with how it's been done, or do you? I I guess that's the question. Are you satisfied with what the repair job is right now going forward?
Uh, at the back of the property, no.
Okay.
It's very big. It's just gonna get worse as it settles.
Okay.
So I know the, I know the guarantee with the contractors only two years, but it'll probably be after that when it starts to separate the worst.
Okay, so the first issue, uh, because I guess your ask is more than the ASP. Let's, so just make sure that the itemized list correct. So
Yeah.
The one is a concern is the current status of the drainage swales, correct?
Yeah.
And then from what I understood, you said that it was, um, forgive me, it just um wasn't really loud where on my side. Uh, the concern was also that they're smaller than they were before?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, was there any rationale given for why they made them like that?
No, and I did try and address it, but like I said, that I didn't get a response before they poured the ditch.
Okay, and then the curbs are also an issue is what I'm hearing as well. In the front of the house, is there anything in the front of the house as well that's?
Oh, so the the drainage ditch runs through both of our properties and then it goes out onto the street on Mission Avenue.
Okay.
And it it in a really heavy rain, when vehicles go by, it's quite deep, like up to their tires, like, you know, right up to the top of the curb. And there's also a sewage line in front of us and the water pours into there as well.
Okay. So the, is there anything else that you were looking for at this point? Um, just to, I guess, address the immediate needs is looking, you're looking at the quality of the drainage swell as it is today and how it will be handling the drainage in the front of your house going forward.
It's like I originally asked, um, as I said, in the, very quickly went through there. But I I originally asked for like some alternative methods because what they did was just replaced a hundred-year-old with a hundred-year-old plant to pick the water off. So no storm, no investigation into any, you know, different kind of storm removal, storm water removal. So, and the sewer lines are all an issue on that, on that. Like we've all had our things replaced. And so I know the one on the main will probably get done, maybe when they join up with Riverside.
Right. So are you aware of any other alternate um type of drainage, or you're just?
Well, I was a water and wastewater tech, so I did inquire that they maybe look at like the storm, like an actual underground storm drain, which I was, it was not acknowledged at all. Like it was not looked into because Mission is from the municipal planning development plan is all above ground. So you know, I would just like maybe in the future to maybe look at something just for the end of the Mission Hill.
So apart from the underground, which will obviously be super expensive to put the whole thing underground now, uh, when they built Mission, they weren't thinking that far ahead. Um, but apart from the underground, are there any other alternate methods that you were thinking that should have been explored or, because we'll just see if administration has or has not done them, or is that the main one that you were concerned with?
Um, that is really the main one I'm concerned of with. I don't think that I'm the only one that has water drainage issues at the bottom on that street. Um, most people try and build their houses up as high as they can, so to try and avoid it, but uh, that's all I know about.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Wait, hold on. The councillor Killick also has a question.
Oh, right.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, uh, Leanne, for coming in today and a great presentation. It shows that you've got some uh, done a lot of research and taken a lot of good pictures, which really helped us to understand the uh, the situation. Did the work that was done, I just want to clarify, the work that was done uh to remediate it or fix it was last year uh in
It was in October.
In October?
Yeah.
Ha- have you um experienced any flooding or actual damage in that period from spring runoff or anything like that? So?
Uh, we haven't had any rain.
I was thinking maybe snow runoff melts uh from the park.
No, like it's, it's, it's definitely not. We didn't have much like snow that melted either, so we're just very worried about the first heavy rain.
Yeah, I I, and that's why I asked the question. I want to make sure that you're not suffering damage, additional damage.
And like, and like I said, we installed a sump pump and we've done a lot of landscaping, so we're trying to avoid any future flooding because the previous owners told us that the both basements did flood. It was quite a while ago, but it did flood.
Yeah, and and my other question then would be that you've obviously been working with some contacts at the city um, and have got to the point where you've, you feel you haven't got resolution and that's why it's coming to council today. You've, okay, you've got anything else to add there? It's?
I I just think Mission is one of the oldest neighborhoods, like it has overhead power lines, above groundwater. I think that it should at the very least have an ARP that they could maybe come up with or so, if it's something planned in the future, because I really figure, I really found their solutions were just prescribed, like that's what they had sixty years ago, so that's what they put in. And I just think alternative methods could be looked at. So.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And again, thanks for the detail of the presentation. It's not often we get that much uh
Good.
info to help us understand.
And so that's it for council questions, Leanne, but just process wise, uh, on our agenda, we have presentations and then the next part of our agenda is um, business arising. So then that gives council an opportunity to talk to our staff. So if you want to stick around for a little bit, there might be some questions from council.
Oh, that'd be great.
To some sort, some of the utility staff. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Crutchfield. Welcome back. Seems like it's been a while since you've been in chambers.
Yeah, I know. No, it isn't like they don't have a lot to say sometimes and hopefully I get, don't get too lippy today, but thank you, uh.
Go ahead when you're ready. Yep.
Well, uh, first off, uh, thank you, Mayor Heron and uh councillors for hearing me today. I'm here today primarily as a result of my review of the agenda, reports attached to today's uh agenda. And I begin with two questions. Does St. Albert have a revenue problem or a spending problem? What is the inclination to front-end development at the expense of funding work that benefits today's taxpayers? At a time when our provincial government seems most inclined to walk away from its responsibility and offloads the responsibility and liability to municipalities, why does this council continue to pursue the promise of other revenue streams hinged on commercial development by front-ending development? It's a precarious gamble to put today's scarce tax resources upfront to pursue other sources of revenue, particularly when those tax resources were acquired to meet the needs of today's residents. Council is to be congratulated and ever more resolute in its efforts to to diminish the liabilities associated with R RMR. The here and now demands on scarce tax resources are a perennial problem, challenge for municipal councils. So I have to wonder why these limited tax resources should be directed to initiatives that offer at best only a promise of a tax windfall. Unlike Wimpy in the Popeye cartoon, who remains accountable to honor the pledge. Who can trust me? I have it in the future. I value green space, the Red Willow Park, and especially its trail network. So I'm here today to speak in support of councillor Hughes' motion for more inexpensive options to complete old Bellrose Trail project. I also support councillor Hughes' postponed budget motion calling for the trail maintenance budget to be returned to the original budget of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Hundred thousand. If there's anything that council should recall from the consequences of COVID, it is the value and importance St. Albert residents place on the green space and its associated network of trails. Residents' use of these community amenities escalated during COVID and continues to grow to this day. Consequently, I'm disheartened to learn council removed Oakmont Trail from its list of capital projects as part of its twenty-three budget deliberations. Particularly at a time when trail use is escalating and intensive housing is either nearing completion near Canadian Tire or getting started adjacent to the trail like Riverbank Landing. And what are the new areas like Riverside and Sheroot? These green spaces and the associated trails are incredibly important elements of attracting people to settle in Alberta and raise families. The provision of these amenities should take precedence over the pursuit of potential income from speculative commercial development where the timescale to build out can be longer than the period of debt payment. I have two recommendations to council for using today's tax resources. They include place greater emphasis on funding the needs of today's residents. Two, reconsider being the driver behind the development of newly annexed areas. Northeast servicing and Lakeview Business District, to speak of two areas. Let the developers who have the financial risk in play be the ones to lead development. Only involve St. Albert tax resources with risks are minimal or non nonexistent for investment. Speculation is best left to speculators and gamblers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crutchfield. Uh, any questions of council? Oh, councillor Killick, go ahead. Can you not? Okay, let me know when you want to ask a question. Cool. You're done?
Yeah.
Those from before? Councillor Mackay?
Thanks, Mr. Crutchfield. I appreciate your your uh comments. I just want to make sure that I was clear that uh, you, the portion that you were referring to, and I just want to make sure I'm clear that you know that what we're talking about is the old service road that went into the reservoir or the the area. That's kind of the area. The other areas in front of Riverbank Landing and all that are still intended to move forward if they come back. It's just that last kind of portion that moves up towards Sturgeon County.
Yeah.
That because of northeast servicing that's happening, um, there's an opportunity to either go back to to the way it is currently.
Yeah.
Or we take the advantage of maybe turning it into an actual trail. I just want to make sure that you're clear that we're not not doing the other piece in front of Riverbank Landing and then and up to the bridge.
Yeah, no, it's my understanding that it's just the old Bellrose Trail, but uh, I do have a concern over those other two segments.
Yeah, I mean, those are two right now are potentially planning to move forward pending funding and approval. It's just the last little piece that we were
Correct.
looking at, but it's going to be returned to the current state it's in unless we move forward with the motion that's.
Yeah, my overall thrust here is that uh, the existing taxpayers are putting money uh into your hands in trust about spending it. And I think, as I mentioned, RMR, I think, is a very good decision in terms of going through with that. And uh, there's a whole variety of other things that I think have been really positive in terms of uh enhancing uh St. Albert. It's just that this trail network in particular, there are definite gaps in it and green space and to me is very critical and that Botanica or that Riverbank Landing development, because they were allowed to come so close to the riverbed, river edge, uh, valley edge. Uh, I'm really concerned that uh, we're going to miss out on an opportunity uh there, but uh, I'll leave that for another day. Thanks.
Thanks. Okay, thanks.
Right, thank you. And your, your screen's not working?
No, it was, but Sean used his magic fingers and now it seems to be working.
Okay. All right, I see no more questions, so thank you for joining us.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, that moves us to business arising from the presentations. So is there any members of council that have questions for our staff? Either on Mr. Crutchfield or, okay, whoa, piling up. Councillor Hughes, go ahead.
Maybe I'll wash a bunch of the questions afterwards. Um, so with relation to this, the drainage issue, I ended, like she showed us the pictures of the repair and it, from an aesthetic point of view, from an aesthetic point of view, I understand her concerns. So is there what can be done to actually repair this to where it would look like it would actually make it long term? Or do we think that it's good to go in spite of how it looks?
Um, I think we've got Reagan online. Yep, Reagan, I'll ask you maybe I'd comment on that first. Thank you.
Sure, through the chair to councillor Hughes, it's a two-year warranty period that started in November of last year. So we're continuing to monitor and smaller cracks we consider to be aesthetic cracks. Um, there are also a number of joints. The joint sealant has been replaced. So I think that's some of what she's speaking of is, uh, these, these are actually planned cracks at, at the joints. And the joint sealant was, uh, was not adhering properly to the concrete. So that, that has all been replaced. Uh, all of the joint sealant is to my understanding. So. Um, and then there's a, there's a couple of small hairline cracks, less than point three millimeters that are not large enough to require repair according to our, the standards and specifications for the contractor. So. But we'll continue, we're, we'll continue to monitor through the, through the warranty period.
So, cause was it because the, the joint sealant, was it because it was applied so late in the season it wasn't, wasn't sticking or?
So you're saying. I can't, I, I can't comment on the reason why the joint sealant didn't, didn't stick. They may, they may not have used the correct type of joint sealant. There could, there could be a lot of reasons why it didn't stick, but uh, it wasn't adhering properly. So, so it's all been, been, been replaced. So.
So I guess the question is, I understand it's under warranty and they're fixing it. I too have concerns about whether or not we're just going to be having more issues when the warranty period's over. Do we have any ability to just say, I want you to redo it? In our contracts? Because when there's this many levels of issues and I realize it's like point three for the start, but water gets in and it spreads and it cracks. Cause I've watched all the national park video boards. So I know that a, a small crack with water becomes a large crack without too much effort. Uh, especially when it involves ice.
So, so, oh, sorry to.
Yeah.
We do, we do, we use an external engineering consultant. Uh, the, the design was done by an external engineering consultant and, and they were onsite doing, doing the inspections throughout the construction period. So I, I, so I would suggest that we consult with our external consultant and, and determine what deficiencies um, we can continue to push the contractor to, to fix and, and at what point we, we can reject the work that has been performed. So.
Could it, um, as a information requister, I'd just like to have an update on what, what is found. I'm not expecting to have an answer at this meeting, but I'd like to, if you do have a conversation and get back to us as to what exactly is found and exactly what we can do to encourage it. Cause I, like I said, I just don't want to have this be a repair job for twenty-four months and then it's actually a problem. Because the repairs are not sufficient and we took a job that wasn't ideal. So, um, then the other question I had was about the front curvature with the drainage. So if everything's coming, we have, we have drainage problems all over the city. Like we're on hills. So we've got drainage problems all over the city and it's not like it's a monster of a beast to try to manage it, to try to actually make the water flow where you want it to at the rate you want it to, et cetera. I don't know if there has been any discussions, not even for this property, but for in general, where there's other flooding issues. Are we? Are we, do we have a plan that we're even discussing? I'm looking at you, Mr. Fletcher, but also looking all over right now. And how we're going to handle the road drainage issues that we do have in all the older neighborhoods?
Yep, ma- maybe I'll ask Donny George initially to, to make some comments. Um, what I would say is that's a very, very expensive prospect over the long haul. Uh, so certainly as we look at routine maintenance across the board, these things are considered. Um, but proactive, we're going to go in and do it right away. I don't believe that's financially sustainable, Donny.
Through the chair to councillor Hughes, yes, I agree with Bill. This is being considered as part of, part of our R M R program, whether the road project drives the drainage or the other way around, drainage drives the project. We have both cases. So depending on the priority that comes to city to, uh, fund some of these R M R projects, we do consider drainage into the mix. Um, so if you look at the history of things, if Dean has a project that goes into an older neighborhood to replace the road structure, we do look at any drainage issues that we need to fix. That's the first, surface drainage that we are looking at. Major R M R project comes to the storm level of service R M R project that utilities put out there for upgrades of pipe system, the bigger system underneath. So that's in general how we deal with existing drainage concerns.
Okay. I just, so we are addressing it as it comes up as, on a piecemeal basis, I suppose to look at that. Cause I know other properties where like the flooding at the bottom of a hill and the drainage, the sewage is sort of drainage spot is five feet out from the edge and it actually just floods right up to the garage of every major rainfall. And that's been going on now for like sixty years. So, and, and that's just one example of like, we know that there's a drainage problem, but it will cost us a lot of money to repair it. So you're saying at least, at least when this is happening, it is somewhat, but it's also a slow progress to get there.
That's true. And some of them could be dealt with as part of our maintenance program, flushing out the catch basins and whatnot. If there is a localized flooding that's occurring, we do go by address those by complaint based or by inspections that the city staff does.
I, I guess it's just one last question as a follow-up. Do we have a list of whether our drainage, known drainage issues in the city? Because that would make it much easier for, if there are repair jobs happening, that we are automatically triggered to look at also addressing that at the same time. Cause sometimes we aren't even aware of it unless a resident complains and the resident's not going to complain if they have taken any action. So then it could actually get missed. So have we done anything about planning to investigate? So at least we'd have a list of known areas?
Maybe I'll refer that to Reagan because he runs the asset management program with the utilities and they, they run a map behind the scene to collect all this data.
So through the chair to councillor Hughes, we, we do track, um, known stormwater issues in the city. We, we identify uh, issues through our utility master plans when we do hydraulic stormwater modeling. But of course that doesn't pick up everything, uh, and, and, and we do respond to resident concerns. And, and in this case, this was a concern that was expressed by a resident about, uh, the condition of, of the, of the existing swale. And, uh, we were able to fit it in, I think in the very next year into, into our LOS program. Um, but there are a number that we're not able to get to. Um, there, there's a number that we and, and we, we like to do them as efficiently as possible. So if we're doing other construction in the area, we'll try and and do a few projects that are of a similar scope. But, uh, but we can't get to all of them all at once. So, uh, we, we do have known deficiencies. And the other thing is the, these overland drainage areas, we, we have significant portions of the city that rely on overland drainage exclusively. Um, and they don't have the under, underground stormwater systems, but even in the underground areas, we're relying on the overland drainage for those major flood events. We're relying on the overland drainage for all flood events in these existing areas. And to my understanding, this whale was replaced with a swale of, of equivalent size. Uh, because capacity was not identified as an issue at this location. So.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Killick, go ahead.
Thank, thank you, Reagan. I you actually answered my first question by saying, I, I, I thought I heard that it was replaced by a smaller swale uh, or trough or whatever, but you just clarified that it was, um, like for like size. And again, also clarified that it it was done through an engineering study that would have identified this is a capacity we need, this is a size. So it's not like we just went in on our R M R budget and said, oh, we're going to dig a you know, there was actually science behind it. And, and supports the size and location and the way it is, right?
That's correct. Through the chair to councillor Killick, yes. And, and it's, it's built to a higher standard in some ways than the previous design. The previous design was cement blocks right on dirt. Uh, so there was no, uh, we've got three hundred millimeters of, of gravel beneath this whale and then, and it's, it's entirely with concrete. And, uh, and it includes rebar and then every five meters, there's a, there's a joint for, to allow for cracking because we expect that there's going to be cracking. We, we hope that it's going to be at the joints. It doesn't always occur at the joints though. Uh, but it doesn't, it doesn't significantly affect the ability of this whale to do what it's, what it's meant to do. And, uh, and unless, unless the cracks get large, in which, in which case they need to be repaired. Either through the warranty period or they would be repaired by us, uh, beyond that.
Yeah. And we, we have, um, expansion joints in our sidewalks. We put them in our driveways. We put them in um, our swales that are at the back of, you know, cement swales that are at the back of people's houses. Um, the, the, these expansion joints would be similar to what we see everywhere else in the city, right? There.
I, I would expect so, yes, because, because we're expecting some settlement. And we have uh, fluctuations in moisture content that, that affect the soil. And we also have fluctuations in temperature that deflect that, that, you know, you're going to get some heaving of, of the concrete over time. So. So we have, we have to allow that. You also get shrinkage during concrete as, as it's drying. So, so there's going to be some of these cracks that I would suspect are, are shrinkage cracks and they're, they're less of a concern. So.
It's built to our standard engineering protocols. So we see throughout the city in, in that regard. There's nothing unique that we did here, other, other than I said, because it's.
In, in, in discussions with Mika, the joint sealant is something that we don't normally do. So that was something that I, I, my understanding that was at the request of, of the, the residents, actually, that we do a joint sealant at the joints. Typically, we don't, we don't do that.
Okay. Um, the, the other two questions. So I'm, I'm glad to hear it's been built to, to proper standards. I wouldn't have expected anything less. Ha- has there been any other uh, concerns raised from residents in or along, uh, that road? Around drainage, either into their basements or, you know, water levels out on the street. Have, have we got any record of of that as kind of an isolated concern or is it a broader issue in, within Mission along that road?
I, I'm not aware of any other issues. Um, I know we're taking a look at the Mission sanitary right now. Um, there are, there are some sections of sanitary that we have concerns about. Um, but, uh, haven't heard anything on, on the drainage. We do get you know, sporadically throughout the city in these older areas that are heavily reliant on overland drainage, they, they are more prone to flooding because they don't have the additional um, underground system, um, to help out. So.
So am, am I hearing that this area doesn't have storm drain? It has.
It doesn't, it, it does not have underground storm. And that was one thing that was looked at was replacing this swale with an underground storm system. But the issue is you, you take it down to Mission Avenue and there's no underground storm to connect to. So if, if we're going to do underground storm, we need to start it at the river and, and, and then it's, it's, uh, it's a, it's an expensive proposition, but you know, we would, over a number of years, it could be done, but you need to start at the bottom. So.
Yeah, okay, that, that really provides kind of a context to it. Um, you can't just fix one little piece without it going somewhere. Right? Okay. But, um, and so no, no other complaints. Um, i- is it an issue in the fall when we, we often hear like in Brandon and in Mission that leaves and what have you, plug up the ditches? Is there anything that is unique to this area that would be you know, different than anywhere else? So we.
Not, not that I'm aware of, but it, it is a struggle for us. The, the, the areas that are reliant on the overland drainage icing is also an issue uh, because we get issues with ice buildup.
Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that there's nothing unique abo- about this particular area or unique about the way we've, we replaced that, uh, that swale or drain. And I, I appreciate that we did it early. Before it fully failed. So, uh, and, and to a higher standard. So thank, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, councillor Killick. Any other questions of members of council? Councillor Bermanzki, I saw your name up earlier, but your question's got answered. Okay, awesome. All right, I see no more questions, um, or business arising and there's no more delegations. So we'll move on the agenda. Part of agenda item is for is also announcements and public appointments. Um, I, I just will announce that earlier this afternoon, councillor Mukai Killick and Broadhead joined me upfront for the raising of the pride flag. So that's why councillor Killick's wearing his Out Loud shirt today. So thank you for joining me. And that is the only announcements I have for now. Next is consent agenda. I believe we only have two things left on consent. That is the minutes and then E M R B. Briefing. Now, we didn't get the briefing on, on E M R B until it before, right before the meeting started. So does anyone need to pull that to ask questions? All right, I'll get somebody to make them consent agenda motion. Councillor Hughes, go ahead.
Other recommendations in the following agenda reports be approved. Six point one, regular council meeting minutes of May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three and special committee, the whole meeting minutes of the May sixteenth, twenty twenty and ten point one, Edmonton Metropolitan Region Board briefing.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed and that passes unanimously? So on consent, we had the minutes. Now we're into our first public hearing of the day. Uh, which is by law five, two thousand and twenty-three, which is rank and drive closure. Um, I will call the public hearing or make it open?
Excuse me, mayor, it's time specific for two o'clock.
Oh, it's not even two.
Not two o'clock yet.
Leyden's probably not here yet, so I'll wait. Forgot that we started at one now. Let's move on. Oh, we're going to get into a bulky conversation. Then we're going to have to take a pause. So we have twenty minutes approximately to start to talk about council, um, compensation and remuneration. So councillor Mr. Watkins. Mr. Watkins, uh, do you, would you like to speak now? Okay, up to the mic you go. Yeah. I saw you as a registered speaker here during the previous and I'm like, oh, councillor Watkins has a question.
No, no questions, madam mayor.
Thank you for joining us. And so you said very clearly, and I will restate it, you're not here as a member of the committee that you volunteered for, and thank you for that. You're here as an independent resident.
That's correct. Even though I do support all the work of the committee and it was great work done. I'm just speaking as a citizen and as a past councillor.
All right, go ahead.
Uh, February twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, there's a Gallup survey that said the top six uh, things employees wanted in their next job. And the number one was a significant increase in income or benefits. Sixty-four percent said that was very important. Throughout Gallup's workplace, uh, research, pay has been one of the most important factors when accepting a new job. And take it, this is a job. Uh, close behind was greater stability and job security with fifty-three percent. A councillor's job provides neither security for most people and is a move that results in a decrease in income or benefits for lots. A councillor is a job different from most. But make no doubt about it, it is a job and it's a full-time job and the committee word verified that. It is different than most jobs because when you apply, you have to spend money, time and effort to mount a campaign. A successful campaign can cost thousands of dollars. You can attempt to raise money. However, it takes a lot of donors to get the required money. I know because my campaign cost close to nine thousand dollars. When I was running, a young high school student was running, his name was J C Everland. And his comments were something like this. I have no money and all I could afford were ten signs. He came in second last. If you don't have a number of backers or deep pockets, your campaign funding is a big barrier to entry for someone trying to get into politics. And if you're spending that much money to get a fifty thousand dollar a year job, there are a lot of jobs that you can apply for, for free that potentially have similar pays and a lot more stability and longevity than a politician. And if you run for four years, you have to spend another several thousand dollars and to try to get reelected again. And history shows in St. Albert that you're most likely not to get reelected. In twenty-ten, it was a hundred percent turnover of the six councillors. In twenty-thirteen, fifty percent. Twenty-seventeen, sixty-six percent turnover. Twenty-twelve, twelve percent turnover. This speaks to the Gallup poll about people wanting job stability and there is very little in politics. When you look at the numbers of candidates or applicants, it doesn't get much better. In twenty-seventeen, there were twelve candidates. Twenty-ten, there were thirteen, twenty-thirteen, sixteen. Twenty-seventeen, there were twenty-five. That was your Iran, only because the mayor was getting taken to court. I think there was a lot of interest in running for politics. In twenty-twenty-one, there were twenty positions. This is for six positions. The editorialists, the letters to the editors, the newspaper articles mostly say that we shouldn't do this for money. You should do it out of a sense of community. And I agree, that's why you should run for office. But let's not make those people work full-time and provide them with a wage that is below the median lone parent income in St. Albert. Which in nineteen, which in two thousand and six was fifty-one thousand. And the family income, average family income was a hundred and ten thousand. Today in twenty-twenty, well, a couple of years ago in twenty-twenty, it was eighty-six thousand and a hundred and seventy-four thousand. How can a lone parent afford to be a councillor? And many people know how hard it is to live on fifty thousand dollars a year in St. Albert. And if you're alone or you're supporting somebody, an elderly parent, a sibling, a spouse, it's almost impossible. Like it or not, St. Albert is not a cheap place to live. I believe many councillors have in the past and presently struggle with trying to balance a second job on what they thought was a part-time job in order to make their financial ends meet. It's easier if you have a pension from a previous career to make it work. And that excludes a lot of people under sixty years old from trying to run for this job. And that excludes a lot of people under sixty years old from trying to run for this job. And you as council, you have a chance to help the situation. Counsel is our board of directors. You run the municipal corporation, approve spending, the buck stops with you. It is a very important job with lots of scrutiny. The twenty-twenty-three budget was a hundred and twenty-four. Point nine million. I think that to be responsible for a hundred and twenty-four point nine million, seventy thousand dollars is fair, and if not, it's underpaid. Another twenty thousand dollars for six counselors is another a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on the budget. Or point zero nine three percent, less than a tenth of a percent in the budget. But popular opinion. Is that politics? Politicians are not worth, will we pay them already? And that they are people. And that is why, while as a taxpayer, you pay a portion. People always say, I pay your salary, I pay your salary. Well, as a taxpayer, you also pay a portion of your own salary. As as every person in this municipality. So I don't know if you're going to change the opinion of what people think of politicians. To the inevitable criticism that you will receive if you approve the increase. From the sidelines, online, and in the newspapers. I asked the critics. Run for office, get involved in a committee, do something instead of snipe and talk. As my mom used to say, put up or shut up. It's easy to criticize. It's also, I also say to the critics, before you judge, walk a mile in my shoes. Whether you approve this raise or not. You're not going to change people's or the press's opinion of politicians. But hopefully, this will result in increased numbers and diversity of candidates. And result in compensating our counselors fairly for the very important full-time job that you do. Thank you.
I was just about to say, your time is up. Any questions of Mister Watkins? Council Hughes.
Hey, Ray, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Very well said. Um, the one question I had was that uh, occurred to me after we had the committee meeting. Was the recommendation was to delay to twenty twenty-five, you know, for the pay increase.
Right.
Was there a rationale from the committee as to what would change? In the job description or workload between now and twenty twenty-five to justify why the current counselors should not get that pay raise, but the next counselors should? Would there's, was there ever a discussion at the committee level saying there's a dramatic change in what we're expecting from counselors, and so therefore? We should delay the uh, pay difference until a later date?
To my knowledge, that is that discussion didn't occur.
Okay.
In that manner.
So the decision to move it forward was, was it based because administration was recommending that it was put at twenty twenty-five, or?
One, once again, I'm not here to speak on behalf of the committee, and I'm not too sure why the recommendation was moved forward to twenty twenty-five. And in the long run, but it was cast as votes. I was against that vote. I wanted it to be implemented immediately.
Okay, thank you, just as a general insight, but thank you. Appreciate all your time.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Council Jolly has a question.
Thank you. Hello, Ray. Um, my question is, um, you know, back when you were in my position, so you had, you know, a couple of teenagers at home. Could you have afforded to be on council full-time making seventy thousand dollars a year?
Uh, at seventy thousand dollars a year?
Yeah.
No, I couldn't afford it. Um, when I was a counselor, I was um, I was fortunate enough to have a company of my own, and I had a bit of cash in that company. So I subsidized my. Counselor's salary with my own cash. Every month.
Okay.
But seven about seventy thousand dollars, I. Don't, like I said, if you look at the loan income in St. Albert in twenty twenty for a lone parent income, it's eighty-six thousand dollars. So. Uh, that's the median. So where where do you want? Where do you want your counselors to be? Do you want to underpay them? Do you want to pay them uh, in accordance with everybody else? Do you want them to walk around poor or what?
Yeah, no, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Mister Watkins, did the topic of per diems come up in your conversations?
Uh, yes, per diems did come up.
And? Do you recall why why it was dropped? As a recommendation? If you don't, that's okay. I just want.
Uh, one, once again, uh, it was a uh, like, we we kind of did everything on a demarc democratic vote, so we had a vote on things. And uh? We voted and. I lost that vote and that vote won.
Okay. I see no more questions. So, oh, Council Kilik, go ahead.
Um, thank you for coming today. It it just. Y- your presentation kind of highlighted two things. Now, number one is. You're highlighting that seventy thousand dollars is what was recommended, and yet. We're saying that seventy thousand dollars isn't even really enough to meet. A single family. Uh, or a single in income. To live in St. Albert. So. So things kind of don't jive. Should. I- in your thought, would you say it should actually be more?
In my own personal opinion, yes, I I would say.
And and I'm staying away from your committee.
That's just my own personal opinion. Yes, I I say I say it should be to be closer to the median. One family income. One person income. Uh, that's in St. Albert.
Yeah.
Uh, which is. Which was eighty-six thousand dollars. Now, I don't know if it could be, if it should be eighty-six thousand dollars, but.
And and in twenty.
I know one thing, I I'll tell you one thing for sure, Council Kilik, fifty thousand dollars isn't enough.
Oh, and I I.
For the job.
Appreciate I appreciate that. And and I just wondered, I mean, I I heard you say seventy, and then? What our median income is, and I'm thinking like, what's it gonna be in twenty twenty-five and? Rising costs and.
Well.
Everything, but.
I was, I I was looking for a higher number. We were on a committee, the committee voted, and the committee decided on the seventy thousand.
Okay, but but your personal opinion.
My personal opinion is that I'd like to see it higher.
As a resident.
Yeah.
Okay.
Having. Walked in those shoes and done the job.
Yep. Yep, thank you.
Council McCaugh.
Thanks. It's not much more. Are you gonna run? Again?
I I'd just been recently appointed to the land of property rights tribunal. And I think that uh? Disqualify being a politician again.
Congratulations. I was only kind of like, sat serious here. Uh, the uh, um. The question I have was related back to, you know, your. Your decision, and uh, thanks for saying that. One of the challenges we had, I'm cast your memory back. It's the last time we brought up the. Counsel remuneration or knee relax sitting and uh, and suspension radically in this seat.
Yeah.
Um, you you, your record at that time was to say, no, you don't like voting on your own salary. You have a. Committee of residents. No, I I'm, so I mean, um.
I'll clarify why I voted, why I voted.
Okay, yeah, I mean, so I mean, the point being, just so I'm clear and clarify, is is that? When you're sitting in here, one of the reasons we strike the committee is so that you have residents' feedback that they talk about your remuneration, they talk about what your salary is. But it's not us voting or. Casting a vote in relation to our our salary, so. What, but you say your recommendation or your opinion at the time of the committee was is that it would take. Effect. Immediately. But that's not what the committees. So I'm just curious as to why you feel that way now as a resident. On a committee versus how you voted past.
It's a good question. Council McGee.
No.
The reason why I voted against any pay raises. And I voted against, I think I voted twice against them, is because when I was elected. I knew what the pay was. Okay. But I was told it was a part-time job. So I thought that to vote on a pay raise, when I had accepted the position with the fifty thousand dollars. Was not right for me. Now that I'm not a counselor anymore. I'm totally supportive of paying more money. But I knew what the job paid. When it came in, I knew it was fifty-one thousand, so I thought it was. I thought it would be. Wrong for me to complain about the job. When I knew what it was when I got in. What I was really complaining about was that we were told it was a part-time job, and it was not a part-time job. So I think some of the good work at the committee done did is that they said, let's say this is a full-time position, and let's tell people what they're gonna get paid. And that it's gonna be full-time. So I mean, I I think that's the best, the best outcome we can come with. Um, like I said, the 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 popular opinion is never gonna. Want to give a politician more money. You know that for sure, because everybody has such a negative politician uh, image of politicians, almost as bad as developers. Or use car salesman, right? So. I have, I've been a developer, but I haven't been a used car salesman yet, so.
Yeah, I think you could sell cars. Uh. Anyways, I appreciate your honesty. I know that's a difficult question, but I mean, you're difficult, you were in that.
No, I I knew, I I just felt that when I was elected, I knew it was fifty grand. Yeah, I couldn't vote to raise it while I was.
Thanks, I appreciate.
That's why I didn't run, and I didn't run again, and now I'm saying we should get paid. Or you should get paid.
I appreciate your candor.
Thank you very much.
All right, we have eight minutes, and I have two more counselors with questions. Council Broadhead?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Not much of a question, but I just uh, I did want to uh. Thank you for the work that you did uh, uh. Mister Watkins, uh, certainly appreciated sitting next to you for three years. And you brought integrity and and passion to four years, pardon me, you're right. Uh, to the position every day. So uh, anyway, uh. Uh, the the unique part about you being on the committee is that you actually lived and walked the log for four years, and so. Think you brought a perspective uh? To uh, the remuneration conversation that needs to be had, and so thank you for the work you did.
Thank you, Council Broadhead.
Thanks, Council Broadhead. Council Bermansky.
Um, thank you again, Mister Watkins, for coming forward. I won't call you a counselor. So, um, I appreciate, you know, you speaking on behalf of that person that walked in the shoes and and to me, being the new counselor, first time on here. I was still surprised, like you knew that for four years, council knew that for four years, but nobody mentioned it. When I got elected, right? When I, when I uh, put my name forward, I knew the pay, but I was also still told like last fall that it'd be part-time. I had scheduled it around my work schedule, which of course. Just got totally squashed and demolished out of the picture, you know, to be able to do the uh, counselor job. And the question that I had is, was it not mentioned last council that it was supposed to be a change for this current council, then it got somewhat delayed? Because that was my understanding that it the committee should have done that. For a start date of November twenty twenty-one is is how it was portrayed to me.
Sorry, I I can't.
You can't answer that.
I don't recall that. Maybe somebody else was on council at the time remembers what happened then.
Okay.
I think the committee got delayed because of COVID.
Because of COVID, is that what happened?
Okay. So there was no recommendations for a change in twenty-one.
Yeah, I think COVID put it, put a nix in everything.
Oh, so if you knew, like you knew in your term in council, so if COVID wouldn't have happened, I guess it would have been done in that term and would have been fixed prior to this time then.
I believe the committee would have been convened.
Mm-hmm.
In that term, and who knows what their recommendations would have been.
Right.
Yeah, true, yeah.
Okay.
I think Madam Mayor has.
I still appreciate you coming forward. It's great. You know what I mean?
Thank you. I'll probably get. I'll probably get nailed with the crest by whatever.
But I, but I mean.
It'll be the first diver, the last probably.
It's good to hear someone's, you know, perspective that no longer sits on council, because there's. Some things, you know, that council's not allowed really, you know, to speak of, so to speak, so. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Council Hughes has one more.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, so um. In light of the fact that I know in the previous term, this you did not vote in favor of it, but your recommendation to this council is to change over to the seventy thousand. Sooner than later, not wait to twenty twenty-five, is that what?
Forthwith, yes.
Okay.
I don't think there's a need to wait for twenty twenty-five with inflation and running two, three percent, two more years is gonna be another.
Right.
Could be another eight percent.
Okay, so. If you were in the seats today, you would vote differently than you did last term on this particular recommendation.
That is correct. I would vote, uh, I would vote in support of the recommendation. Yes, I would.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh. We have five minutes. Council Jolly. Um, we're onto your motion now about the per diems, which is eight point one. I I'll just get you to read it in. And maybe we'll take one question if we have time, but we have to get to the public hearing at two, so I'll just get you to read it in for now, so we know we're talking. Or. We've only been here fifty-five minutes, people. Okay, okay, they're asking for a five-minute bio break, so we'll do the public hearing and then get to your motion after. Is that okay?
Yep.
All right. Okay, five minutes, guys. Go fast.
Should I be able to hear Mary-Henri?
Oh, was the mic not on? Sorry, Council Jolly, we just banged the gavel and declared the public hearing open. That's all you missed.
Perfect, thank you.
I'm sorry. Okay, and uh? Yeah, so. We will. Proceed as we always do with a presentation from. Our uh, illustrious staff, Mister Eric Schultz, who's I can see online. We do have one registered speaker, which is Blade and Dibbin from Select Engineering. I assume Blade is maybe just here to answer questions, but I'll go to him. Oh, you're here in person. I was looking at you. You're just here to answer questions? Did you want to speak? Okay. Uh, all right, and then counsel, as always, I will give you every opportunity to ask what you need to make a decision, and then we will move on. So go ahead, Mister Schultz.
Excellent. Is my presentation showing?
We sure can see it. Yep.
Excellent. Okay, well, good afternoon. My name is Eric Schultz, and I'm here from Planning and Development to present bylaw five slash twenty twenty-three, which is a road closure bylaw. The proposed road closure is in the Riverside neighborhood, which is a residential neighborhood located in the central west part of St. Albert. A road closure is required when a developer wants to develop land that is currently part of a publicly owned roadway. To do so, the roadway must be closed and the land purchased from the city. This can happen as a neighborhood develops, and the local road network design is finalized. For this application, the road portion of road to be closed is located at the west end of Rankin Drive, and located immediately east of Rate Given Drive. The area of to be closed is zero point three four hectares, excuse me. Riverside area structure plan shows the subject area as medium density residential. When development occurs in this portion of the Riverside neighborhood, the roadway will no longer be a road, but will instead be part of a developed site. The existing Rankin Drive roadway will be extended south of the closed portion, as shown in the purple highlight in the magnified cutout. In the land use bylaw, the area that the proposed road closure falls in is currently districted as medium density residential R three A. This means that development. This means that development can occur in the closed roadway without the need for any further redistricting. However, approving a road closure does not transfer the land. A land sale is required to do this. The sale of the closed roadway for this by law is between the city as the seller and the developer as the buyer. The sale will be conducted by the C A O's office with legal services managing the land sale agreement. Only once the land sale is complete can development move forward. This application was circulated to internal and external stakeholders and no concerns or objections were raised. Normally, we circulate these applications to residents within one hundred meters of the proposed road closure, but because this part of Riverside is still under development, there are no residences in this area. In conclusion, the proposed road closure is supported by the Riverside Area Structure Plan. And therefore, administration recommends council approved by law five slash twenty twenty-three as presented today and authorize the C A O to dispose of the closed roadway. That's everything. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You answered one of my questions in your presentation, so I'm good. Uh, Counselor Killik, question for administration.
Uh, yeah, thanks, Eric, for the presentation. I just wanted to confirm, this road has essentially been closed for a long time. Like it, this is just a formality really of.
Exactly. The, the Rankin Drive is sort of, you can see it sort of extended and was sort of roughly graded even maybe, but it, it, the plan has always been to, to develop the roadway the way they're trying to do it now. And this is just a formality to, you know, fix the lines on the map, basically.
Yeah, so closing the road has essentially already been done, but this actually gives the C A O, Mr. Fletcher, the ability to sell the land and dispose of it and uh, uh, do that officially is what we're.
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. You're jumping the gun, Counselor Broadhead.
On the roll.
Uh, he's got her across to make a motion, which means close the public hearing. Is there anyone else who have any questions of either staff? Or Mr. Dibbin from Select Engineering? All right, Counselor Broadhead, go ahead. Guess you weren't jumping again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I moved that public hearing on by law five slash twenty twenty-three be closed.
Thank you. Any comments on that?
Make my comments on first reading.
Okay, call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that passes unanimously. Uh, I'll let you go to first reading then, if you want, Counselor Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That by law five slash twenty twenty-three be read a first time.
Perfect. Accept that. Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, uh, we have, uh, over the course of our term on council, we had to do a number of these over time and it's, it's a matter of, uh, of, uh, taking a remnant piece of, uh, roadway that hasn't been used to the point that, uh, Counselor Killik made earlier in the long time. But the reality of it is, is there's a process to go through in order to free the land up or other use, other purchasing and, uh, and for development as, as was, uh, pointed out in the presentation. So in many respects, while it is a formality, it's a necessary formality. So here we are.
Thank you. Anyone else on debate? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Voting's closed. Passes unanimously. I will let you continue, Counselor Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That by law five slash twenty twenty-three be read a second time. No further comment.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. Passes unanimously. Anyone want unanimous consent? Counselor Mackay, go ahead.
Uh, that unanimous consent, uh, be given for consideration of third reading of by law five slash twenty twenty-three.
Awesome. Call for the vote. Voting's closed. Passes unanimously. So we can go to third reading, Counselor Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That by law five, uh, slash twenty twenty-three be read a third and final time.
Perfect. Call for the vote. Voting's closed and that passes unanimously. And there's one last one, Counselor Broadhead. If you feel so inclined to authorize Mr. Fletcher to dispose.
Well, I'm so inclined, so, um, I moved that council authorized the chief administrative officer to dispose of the roadway closed pursuant to by law five slash twenty twenty-three in accordance with city council policy C dash E D dash oh three.
Awesome. Anything on that?
Uh, this, again, this is a procedure. We've authorized our city manager to, uh, to dispose of land once it's received, uh, council approval.
Awesome. Call for the vote. Vote is closed. And that passes unanimously. A quick question, maybe for Ms. McMorty, any, uh, revenue generated from that sale by policy goes into our land reserve?
Yes, that would be correct. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Great, that was it. Eight-minute public hearing.
Awesome.
Thanks for coming. Just to see your face in person. Okay. Counselor Jolly, let's, uh, move on to your, um, your proposed amendments to council salary for two thousand twenty-five. Why don't you read it in? And, uh, we'll start conversation.
Hey, do you want me to read in all three or just one at a time?
Uh, yeah, read in all three. We'll get the motion to split if so be it.
I, well, and I guess I want to split them as well. I think that it can be done separately, but I can read them.
We know what we're talking about.
Yeah. So the first one is that effective July first, twenty twenty-three, per diems are provided for duties as deputy mayor. Uh, per diems are provided for members of council excluding the mayor for attendance at F C M Alberta municipalities and um, training events, council-appointed committees and formal meetings between council and stakeholder groups to a maximum of twelve thousand dollars per year. That adjustments to the per diem amounts are reviewed as part of the work of the Council Remuneration Review Committee and that per diems match Alberta municipal municipalities per diems for board directors. Um, two is that effective after the next municipal election is twenty twenty-five, as recommended by the Council Remuneration Review Committee, counselors will be deemed full-time and compensated at an annual salary of, I'm going to say eighty-six thousand dollars. I'm going to change that one, plus any cost of living.
So that, what did you, you changed the number?
Just going to change the number to eighty-six thousand dollars based on the public presentation.
Eighty-six?
Yep.
Okay.
Plus any cost of living adjustments afforded to the city non-union employees group in twenty twenty-four. Actually, I'm going to get rid of that last part. Sorry. Just eighty-six thousand dollars, period. Um, and that three, that administration bring to council and update to council policy C C C O three, city council remuneration and expense reimbursement incorporating all approved motions impacting the policy.
Awesome. So you said you wanted to split all three out?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Then we will do that. Um, and just,
Um, Madam Mayor, just, um, just a question in relation to sequencing of the actual motions. I mean, certainly with the, uh, number two as as amended from seventy to eighty-six thousand, I mean, that may impact the whole conversation if that would take place in number one, A, B, C, and D. So would it, this is a question, and would it not make more legislative sense to switch two with one and one and two? Because if, if number two passes, then that would certainly impact number one potentially, because all of a sudden you're really adding quite a bit into the mix here.
Right, okay. And then, uh, threes, okay. Counselor Jolly, are you, uh, amiable to debating your second motion first?
Well, and I'm curious to know if, um, this would work, that the, the wording for that first one be changed? Um, just saying that effective July one and ending at the end of this term, uh, so this council term, these things apply. So basically, per diems would only apply for two and a half years until the salary is increased.
It's your motion. Is that what you want to do?
I'm okay with that. Yeah.
So effective July first, two thousand twenty-three, ending um,
At the end of the present council term. Whenever that is.
For that if we want, but we know what you're saying. End of term. We'll get it.
Yeah, it's still, Madam Mayor, may, whenever. Can I add on to that comment?
Yeah, oh, yeah, let's, let's figure this out here.
I'm, I'm just curious, um, Counselor Jolly, or, I mean, I mean, your motion pertains to the recommendation of committee that the, um, that these all take impact after the next municipal election, number two. Um, so I'm just sequencing this out, um, because, uh, Counselor Hughes has another motion on the that she's just sent notice of. And so it's,
I don't know about that one.
I don't know.
Yeah, it's on, it's on your email.
It's an amendment for number two.
Well, let's, let's do it publicly.
Yeah, I, I know. I, I, okay. All right.
Okay, let's, we're just at questions right now.
Yeah, and that's why my question would be, I'm just still saying that sequentially, I believe that two should come before one, no matter how, because I mean, you always set your base rate or base salary rate and then figure out per diem second to that and other benefits that may go with it. So I would suggest.
I'd be okay with that.
Okay, that's what I was looking for is
Yes.
agreement to that. Okay, so we'll debate number two first.
And I should probably take out the, as recommended by the Council Remuneration Review Committee. Cause it changes.
Which one? In which one?
Number two.
Okay.
And then what I would like to, I sent an, an email.
Okay, just, just hold on. So we're going to do number two that we'll read that effective after the next municipal election in two thousand and twelve, councils will be deemed full-time and compensated at X. Um, eighty-six thousand and a cost of, okay, so that's, that's the new motion. Okay. Uh, and Counselor Hughes, you had an amendment to which one? One, two?
To that motion. That's why I spoke that, which would be to add, yeah, to add to the beginning of the motion. But effective July first, twenty twenty-three, councils are compensated an annual salary of seventy thousand. So, and, and then what the rest of Counselor Jolly's motion was.
So, so you're changing two things in her motion. Date and the, and then amount.
Yes. Well, for the seventy thousand, she's talking eighty-six and I'm not talking eighty-six.
Okay, so we're going to have to debate that separately. Those are amendments.
Yeah, it would be an amendment to number two. Do you want to add that or not, I guess, is the question? Or do you want me to do it?
We're, we're not, we're not doing amendments yet. We're still doing questions.
Okay.
But your intention is, your intention is there.
Yep.
Counselor Minsky, questions?
Um, I just had one question for Counselor Jolly, uh, regarding the, uh, retro, uh, the per diems for July first, twenty twenty-three. Uh, how did you pick that date when half the council have, you know, done their term as deputy mayor and half haven't?
Yeah, I think it was the date that administration recommended. I, it, it's just when we're debating it, that's all.
Okay. I'll just see where the motions land then. Thank you.
I think, I think I was D M in January, so I'm in the same boat as you.
Okay, thank you.
Don't do that to me. Any further questions for Counselor Jolly? And we've split them all out, so we're going to debate.
Number. Do you have? Can I? Can I just ask Counselor Hughes if she'd be willing to, um, put forward that amendment on the number one instead? Because I think my intent is to increase the salary for this, this term. Um, my preference is per per diems, but I think I wouldn't want both. You know what I mean? So if, if you have an amendment saying that the salary be increased to seventy thousand dollars for this term instead of per diems, I'll vote against it probably, but, um, I, I think that would fit better with that, that motion.
So what you're saying is you're not accepting the date as a friendly in yours?
Well, I'm just not accepting as a friendly, but I think it would be a replacement for the per diems motion. I, I think.
To me, it's still two different, um, kettles of fish. So I'm going to do it as a standalone motion if you want, or I can do it as an amendment, whatever. You're the chair mayor.
No, it, it's an amendment to her motion, because if we pass her motion, then you can't make a different date.
Well, her date is for eighty-six thousand in twenty twenty-five. Mine is for July first for seventy thousand. So.
So I'm going to take her motion ex, uh, I will, in two seconds, I'll accept it. And you're going to make two separate amendments. Right?
No, just one amendment for the the two go together. The two things are changing, but it would be.
You're debating a change of date and a change of compensation number.
I, I'm actually adding to it. So I, the, I know I had in there instead of, but in light of what Counselor Jolly put forward, my intention is to add it at the beginning. So it would just say that effective July first is seventy thousand and effective of the next election is eighty-six. That was my intention. So that way it was not to replace hers altogether. And so I'm thinking it could be a standalone motion if you wanted it to be.
I, if I could, Mayor, our recommendation would be to deal with those two things separately.
Yeah.
Um, so that you, one doesn't die because of the other. As an example, you deal with the next council term and you deal with the current council terms distinctly.
So in addition, if I may offer, right after this notice of motion is considered, we're going to be moving to the standing committee of the whole item related to this. So there may also be an opportunity to make motions, um, then.
Right.
To change the start date or the salary.
But if Counselor Jolly's motion passes as is, right, just like right away, that says effective two thousand twenty-five, then we can't make another motion.
But the matter is not the same if it's to talk about whether it should start July twenty twenty-three. So the opportunity, in my opinion, would still be there, because you would have made potentially if this passes for it to start twenty twenty-five, but not twenty twenty-three. So they wouldn't contradict each other. So that would be, in my opinion, the time to make the motion on the agenda is at nine point one instead of here at eight point one.
Okay. That makes sense? Okay. I think it would be a very good idea to get her motion on the screen. So we know exactly what we're talking about. Just the second piece. And then there's a, there's the part, um, plus any cost of living adjustments afforded to the city non-union employment group in two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, although we've already passed that.
Sorry, we, we had heard, I had heard Counselor Jolly say she didn't want that added.
Okay.
Af- after she changed it to eighty-six thousand, but perhaps I just misheard that.
Make sure, I'm just want to make sure you're exactly happy with the motion. Can you see it, Counselor?
I, I said that I'd take it out, but I, I mean, I don't have a I, I'm okay with leaving it out, that last bit.
Did we already approve that?
No.
That's coming next. Okay. All right. Yeah, we're not, I haven't accepted anything yet, so. Away, Counselor Mackay.
Yeah, no, thanks. I appreciate it. And I, I, let's just go slow so we don't
Yeah.
have to redo this all over again. Uh, I guess my question is to administration. One of the comments in the background relating to the per diems was customized testing, rolling out uh, system automation. Uh, is there any comments or concern from administration? Should, um, um, Counselor Hughes amendment move forward around timing? Um, would there be any challenge from a financial or operational impacts to the administration?
No, thanks, Counselor. Um, I, I think the amount of time it would take to physically get there might mean that there'd be, would be some retroactive work to be done. I can't promise that everything would be running smoothly by the first of July, but it could be the start date is the start date and then we, we would backdate it to that timeframe. I don't know if Diane, uh, if you've got any commentary. H R or, uh, finance.
Do you have your microphone speaker on?
Nope.
That's all. I figured, I figured. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, the, the discussion around the new system versus, you know, while we're moving to a new payroll system, like right at the end of June, um, the issue is more so around the per diem piece. Um, the salary piece will be compensated easily within, and we just wanted to wait. So we weren't doing it in the old system and the new system, which is why we asked for the July first date. Um, the challenge with the system is more, is more related to the per diem side because the system doesn't have that functionality. We'd actually, we either have to do it manually and it's going to take staffing resources. Or we have to, um, make system modifications to be able to handle that.
Okay, and I guess maybe subsequent, and it depends as to nine point one, because I mean, there's all the date implies full-time implying maybe operational impacts such as space, um, staffing, things like that. So how does that factor in potentially?
Um, so I, I believe that that's the separate motion to that, um, space and staffing are not short-term solutions. Those will take a while.
Yeah, I would not assume that by Yeah, I would not assume that by passing this, you're automatically adding space and stuff.
Yeah, I I recognize that, I mean, it's actually a separate kind of motion, but at the same time. It plays in potentially a decision.
Okay. All right. Any more questions? Let's start debate. Councillor Jolly, I accept your motion, go ahead.
And ju- just to confirm, we're just doing the second part right now, right?
What's on the screen right now?
I can't see the screen.
Oh, sorry, all that's on the screen is that effective after the next municipal election, two thousand twenty-five, councillors will be deemed full time. And compensated an annual salary of eighty-six thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, um, th- this just speaks to.
Hold on councillor Jolly, I thought you were advised to make it later.
You know, I was listening to you and Amarta, but the question we had with. Uh, the proposed motion one is related to whether or not the base salary goes up, so the base salary has to also be a motion, I can do it after this one, like a two A. Yeah, I'm looking at you councillor, because this is all over the place, but. Uh, I think that the integrity of having question one or motion one has to be after the base, and so if we do it to nine point. One or nine point two, whatever it is. That still defeats the whole purpose of the ordering. So.
What 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 is your intention that you wanna see happen?
That he affected July first, the salary changes to seventy thousand. It does not change what we decided to do in twenty twenty-five, this motion that we have is strictly for twenty twenty-five. The the motion I'm discussing right now is what are we gonna do as of July first? Because we have one motion for per diems for July first, and then it's also what is the base salary? In addition or not in addition to per diems.
So, uh, our legal counsel was, if you wanna talk about stuff starting this year, do it at nine point one.
Well, then certainly you could do it at eight point one as well, but I would, I mean, and it is up to council as a body to decide, but they are two separate. Ideas, so if. I think it would be appropriate after this one is debated to make another motion that's remain to this. It's related to July one, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you.
At seventy thousand.
Okay, we can do that that way.
Sure, because this is after the election. Okay. Sorry councillor Jolly, you can start your debate again.
Thank you, just really briefly, this is to Mr. Watkins' point that. Um, someone who is not relying on a pension, someone who's not wealthy, uh, is excluded from running for 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 council if this is a a full-time. Role, um, and this figure is kind of related to that absolute, you know, that baseline of. You know, being a. Working age person in St. Albert, so um, I I want council to be. Accessible to a wide range of of people and. This number will help with that, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, councillor Hughes, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, the because be clear, this motion does not change anything about what I'd be bringing forward after this, this is two different timeframes entirely. Um. You know, I talked to people who were not retired, who did not have a pension coming in as a subs, like as a base income. And I they were like, yeah, I've thought about running, and I said, well, why don't you? And they said the pay's too low, they all make a massive pay cut. And I said, well, what about if it goes to seventy thousand, because that was the discussion, and they said it's still too low. So I think to um, former councillor Watkins, that's how I see you as um, point. Even seventy thousand, I think, um, would be a deterrent for many younger people who don't have. A a pension to supplement this, or especially for considering this to be full time, so. In spite of the fact it's really large, I don't even know if I'll be there the at in twenty twenty-five, um. But I do think that if you actually wanna get people. As a majority of council, whoever wide diversity of ages are still in working and are willing to take that. Cut in both the security and in the, often in their overall pay still to do this position, you have to entice them. With appropriate salaries, they can actually afford to feed their families. And I think that was the count point of councillor Watkins as well, so at this point, let's talk me out of it, uh, I'm gonna support it.
All right, councillor Killick.
Uh, thank you, I I'm really struggling with. With the number, quite honestly, at eighty-six, I was. Looking back at the um, study that St. Albert participated in uh, HR comparator. Uh, studies that was done by Spruce Grove. Um, and that information was shared to us by our HR. Uh, team and it, their their annual salaries range from. In twenty twenty-two, admittedly, one year back, so it could have gone up, but. You know, Spruce Grove fifty-four thousand, City of Airdrie fifty-two thousand. Or Saskatchewan forty-one thousand, Grand Prairie sixty-one thousand. Um, the. It it just, the City of Red Deer sixty-nine thousand. Um, our fifty-five thousand was lower than, and we were, we participated in this uh. Uh, survey with Spruce Grove, and that's why we got the data back. So I I'm just, um. Really trying to figure out how we we. Had a uh, a recommendation from our. Our independent uh, remuneration committee, sitting at seventy thousand. And now, uh, verbal discussion, uh, five minutes. That we've jumped it up to eighty-six. Uh, without any. Kind of background or benchmarking, um, to see how we compare in in the region, I. I totally agree, you know, with a lot of being on council, a lot of work, there's a lot of responsibility to Mr. Watkins' point. Um, I, you know, dealing with a, you know, a huge budget and budget decisions. Totally agree with all of that, but I I am. Really struggling right now to look at this benchmark study that was done by Spruce Grove, we participated in. And eighty-six thousand dollars is uh, for for the new council coming in in twenty twenty-five. Um, it uh. It it just looks to me that we're way out of sync with with any of our surrounding. Uh, communities, um, so I'm really, quite honestly, quite quite struggling with this.
Councillor Killick, there's still, um. Are there an opportunity to amend the number or defeat this and and make a similar motion with a number that you like?
Well, I think it's it's been amended to go up, so I I would propose. Um.
I need that.
I I would make an amendment uh, to bring it back to the seventy thousand that was. Proposed by the committee and and trust in the work that they had done. Um, I I recognize Mr. Watkins was speaking as an individual and he. I appreciate he made it clear that it was his individual. Uh. Viewpoint that it should be higher. I absolutely appreciate that, but he also mentioned it was a democratic vote of the committee. That came back with a recommendation for seventy thousand, and that that would be more. Um, I I think.
Okay, just before you get into debate on an amendment, let's make sure, I need you to just check, can I take an amendment once we've already started debate?
Yes, you can make, you'd have to vote on it to see if the amendment passes, you can make a motion to make an amendment to the notice of motion, that's before you currently.
Yeah, that's what, okay. Sorry that for those of you speaking, um, spoken, sorry, uh. But I'm allowed to do this, I need a formal amendment, so you're, I'm gonna. Put words in your mouth that you would like to make an amendment to the motion to change eighty-six thousand dollars to seventy thousand dollars.
Correct.
So that's a whole other unfriendly, I'm assuming, motion, um. That we will have to debate, so now we're just talking about the number. Um. And so it's your motion, so you get to open, and you sort of started, and I wanted to make sure we were process-wise, uh, complete, but I'll let you go ahead.
Yeah, thank, thank you, so again, just to um. Reiterate that the we. We as council. Uh, struck a remuneration committee. Uh, because we wanted an independent citizen-led. Review of salary. And uh, they came back after their deliberations, research and um. Democratic process of everybody having their say and and voting, so you know, no one person. Was heard louder than anybody else. And they came back with a recommendation of seventy thousand dollars, I I believe it was adjusted. By uh, saying that they were going to adjust it. Over the next two years, so it might be higher than seventy thousand, I I believe was the actual uh, recommendation coming back. Um, from the committee. The. So I I I look at the work that they've done, we we wanted them to to go away and be independent. And uh, come back to the number, and they've done that. Um, and seventy thousand dollars is still a significant increase. And uh, I I feel uncomfortable that we would overrule that. Um. Based on one presentation at council today by one uh, member of our. Of our community, one resident, to. Just bump that up to eighty-six, so um. My motion is to support that it remain at seventy thousand dollars for twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, now councillor Mackay, is this on the amendment?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
It is, I mean, initially, my comments were gonna be relating to. The first figure, and I think that's, my thoughts have been captured by councillor Killick, my concern was with the first number was, is it. And it was open to maybe some old closing comments, but it just seemed to be grabbed out of the air. Um, and at this particular time, and so, you know, I guess that that could have changed with some closing comments and. And maybe it still will, but um, so. My problem was always with the the way we just seem to arrive at that figure, so. I'm uh, willing to go back and accept the seventy thousand and the timeframe. Based on the committee's recommendation.
All right, thank you, uh. Councillor Broad, is this on the amendment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. While reading what uh, what's before me, uh, that seventy come in at twenty-five ninety-five. Fundamentally, I I have a problem with the number, because it's a three-year-old number. Um, the committee came in and and did the assessment of what was required now. And then extrapolated that to uh, uh, three years later. Which is what we've had difficulty with as as council, uh, giving that, uh, the idea was to uh, make the. Uh, council salary uh, appropriate for the time in which it's applied. Uh, so whether or not I agree with eighty-six or not is a different debate, but what I see before me is seventy thousand starting in twenty twenty-five. And uh. And I don't think, I don't agree with that either, so uh, thank you.
Councillor Mamski, is this on the amendment?
Uh, it is as well.
Hey, go ahead.
I just, I just wanted to confirm that councillor Killick is is still recognizing that uh. It's seventy thousand for twenty twenty-five, because I think it's more the. The date and time that's a concern than the amount, so um. Are you willing to, are you putting forward twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Changing the number.
Okay. And well, the comment I have is again, that I totally respect all the work that the committee did, I mean, they worked hard at it, um, you know, they invested their time. And volunteer time at that, and um, I respect everything they came forward with, but. In fact, their hands were tied on that date, they were directed of the date, that was not their decision, you know, what I was told in interviews, so. I can't.
I I that that was actually their recommendation, that didn't come from our administration.
In the interview, they told me that that was what they were told, because that was a surprise to me, they told me that they were guided. That it would be for the next council, and that was their direction given by administration, that was not their their idea. So I think, and you know, so I can't support it as it sits right now with councillors, uh, Killick.
Okay, I I wanna make sure we're very clear on this, councillor, Mr. Hilt, you were the. You're the representative from administration on that committee?
Yes, um, your worship, thank you, and members of council, the committee had choices to make, the choices were. To have it begin in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. And the vote was to to begin it at the end of the twenty-five term, to be consistent with what was previously done when previous increases were done. The council voted for the next council. And um, at no time did the administration impact or reflect or um. Pass judgment on any of the the dates they were provided to them, um, for the council, for the committee to debate. And they chose the date um, willingly.
Thank you. Councillor Hughes, on the amendment?
Um, just as an ad hoc, I was told the same thing from the committee that it, they were debating or deliberating for the twenty twenty-five. So there might have been a vote on it, but they were certainly asking questions into that parameter, um. Just to be clear, councillor Wa- uh, former councillor Watkins, that's how you'll be to me. Um, he didn't pull eighty-six thousand out of the air, it was based in the median income of a single, a family, a single income. Um, for a single parent, so it wasn't just a a number randomly pulled out. And the other thing is, I I know that we got that um, report from Sturgeon, from Spruce Grove. You, a couple of things we don't understand is that Spruce Grove, I think they're at fifty-six thousand, they do get per diems, they get per diems for everything, they get per diems for anything beyond a basic council meeting, they get a per diem. It's a substantial increase, if you, every time you have to show up, you get paid an extra two hundred dollars or three hundred dollars, depending on the amount of hours involved. They get paid for budget as well, so their base of fifty-six thousand is not accurate as to what their actual full take home is. Um, the other thing to recognize is that Sturgeon County's basis eighty-two thousand, eighty-eight if you're deputy mayor, and they also get per diems on top of that as well. So saying eighty-six thousand with no per diems, for example, is actually not out of line with what our counterparts are being paid. It's uh, it's just simply that it seems high compared to what we are, but we actually. Have been paid substantially less than many other people in the region. So that is also uh, why that came into play, so I'll be, I won't be supporting this amendment to seventy thousand for twenty twenty-five. But just to clarify a few things that might have been misunderstood before.
I'm gonna just jump in here for two secs, because uh, I've been all over the map on this, uh. You know what, I was. I think we have to remember that both seventy thousand and eighty-six thousand, they are all very relative. They are essentially pulled out of the air, and that we try to use comparators. And we try to use average income in in St. Albert, it's hard to justify and really determine. The value of the six councils that sit here, uh. I was actually going to support your amendment, uh, councillor Killick. Um, and I just used the past term, so I think I just made up my mind, but uh, because. I totally respect that it's easier to take that recommendation from a committee, and and don't forget, none of this affects any of us, it's the next council. Um. What changed my mind is what you just said, I forgot about the fact that uh, Spruce Grove. Sturgeon County, they all get per diems, and they, you know, even when I said at the. EMRB table, the mayors quite often joke that this isn't worth two hundred dollars of my time, the mayors are getting per per diems around the region, uh, so. Yeah, I think. I I tried to do some math, but. The difference between seventy and eighty-six is ninety-six thousand dollars. I think that's point zero, I think there's three zeros, point zero 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 percent of our budget, it it it, to me, this is gonna be more of a value statement, and I know. The mid-sized cities were having this conversation, and we're way out ahead, we're talking full time and we're talking. Big salary increases compared to Airdrie and Red Deer, um, which are comparable to us size-wise. But I think. Many are hesitant to take the leap, and so I think if St. Albert takes the lead now, others will probably follow very quickly, not this term, but next term. Um, so. It's really hard, I I don't know, I don't really. Uh, seventy's good, it's it's highly, much higher than what we're currently making, but I think seventy-five would have been the appropriate number, but eighty-six is, again, I'm not gonna. Start making amendments to make it seventy-five, uh, so what I think needs to be recognized is the fact that, um, what comes. Mr. Watkins said, um, about. Eating, earning a living that you can support a family with in St. Albert, and uh. As you pointed out, eighty-six wasn't just on, it was some, it has to be based on something, so. I don't. I'll let you close.
Yeah, thank you, the the, I still come back to the the premise that. Um. With without some. Research, I guess. Into. A comparable number, uh, dollar value. It it just seems we've. In in the matter of moments, um, pulled a number out of the air. Eighty-six thousand. Um. Without any. Research to support it in terms of our other. Uh. You know, like looking at any other areas and and saying, how much do they get for per diems, and so what's their total take home? Uh, et cetera, et cetera. So I I just um, I felt comfortable with with the seventy thousand and a- again, going back to the work that the committee had had done. And I don't know whether they did comparative analysis uh around the region or um that was not in their background report. So I I don't know how they arrived at uh seventy thousand dollars, but it it seemed to be reasonable um increase. And again, we're not voting our own on our own salary. This is future-looking into twenty twenty-five next term. Uh but to to take that huge leap to increase uh to eighty-six thousand is just, you know, a bridge too far for me. The amount that it is for the uh impact to the budget and our, you know, tax rate, uh your rate is is, you know, miniscule amount. Um but it but it's it signals at such a huge increase. I just really uh um I I can't support the eighty-six thousand uh dollars. The other, I think, impact is that residents will look at this. We're we're, council is not going to do a different job. We're we're not going to do more work or less work if we're paid more or less. We still are treating everybody at this at this bench and online. It does a good job. We put the hours in that are required. So um bumping the salary up, I think, in in that huge amount, uh I I think it just sends a wrong signal to our our residents. And uh I I absolutely couldn't support eighty-six. I'm uh happy to support the the recommendations of the committee at seventy. Thank you.
Call for the vote. I'm all over the map on this. Oh, I didn't vote. Nope. I get it. Who do who do we need? Please don't adjourn. Clear it and we'll start again. I might change my mind in that period.
Mayor, my hand was up for quite a while and I didn't enter debate. Like, is it too late?
Did you have your hand up?
I did for like the whole debate.
I'm sorry, Counsel Jolly. Sometimes I minimize the zoom on my screen and I don't look up. So go ahead, absolutely. And please, if that happens again, just call me out on it.
Is that okay, Counsel Kilik?
Uh absolutely. This is too important, Counsel Jolly, to not hear from anybody.
I I just, I was gonna say this for my closing comments for the kind of the main motion, but I'll I'll add it here. So last last May, when inflation hit, I looked at what I was taking home um working exclusively um as a city councillor. And I looked at my grocery bill. I looked at my power bill. I looked at my gas bill and I realized that there was no way that I could continue only working um as a city councillor. Um, it was really, really frightening. Um looking for work that could accommodate um a part-time job on city council was extremely difficult. Um, I eventually did find a role that that could accommodate it. Um but I came very, very close to having to resign, um not because I wanted to, but because I needed to continue to afford to, you know, feed my kids and pay my power bill and things like that. Um like counselor or like uh Mr. Watkins said, seventy is not enough. Um and if we want to send a message that we welcome diverse people um on council, we need to make sure that that the salary is a number that um is inclusive. So that's all I wanted to say and why I'm not supporting the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, we got the screens all figured out? All right, call for the vote. Yeah, mine says that too. Oh, but at at top it says that the main motion should be amended. We got some problems. Don't worry about the, yeah, yeah. That that will appear. Is voting closed? Missed it. So that motion fails. So we're back to eighty-six thousand. Sorry, that motion fails with uh Mayor Heron, uh Counsel Kilik and Counsel Mackay in favor and the rest opposed. So back to the main motion, which says still eighty-six thousand. Um I I don't see any further amendments, so I'm going to go to you for opening arguments, Counsel Jolly.
Nothing further.
All right, anyone else on this uh motion? Counsel Veremansky, go ahead.
Okay, um I can still ask Counsel Jolly a question now at this point in time.
We're in debate, is there?
Okay, um, okay, so
Will it affect how you vote?
I'll just comment then. Um, I guess, you know, I've heard the argument that, you know, councillors can't survive on on the pay currently and having to look at other jobs to, you know, or find a job that works around council to pay the bills and whatever is the intent of Counsel Jolly's motion. And yet, we're saying, but we're okay till twenty twenty-five, which doesn't make any sense to me. So to me, the number that's here is all relative to the the twenty twenty-five date versus the twenty twenty-three date. So I'm not quite sure why we're arguing one number against the other number when it's it's really nothing today. So um I'd like to know what, you know, the intent of of having that amount in the future rather than now, like the amount jumped up so much, but in another time, so. I'll get comments, I guess.
Yeah, maybe Counsel Jolly can comment during close. Uh Counsel Broadhead, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh one of the uh things that I believe I consistently said is that the 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 city of St. Albert uh gets the council that they wish by what they compensated for. And uh and quite honestly, what council is currently compensated at is you get individuals who are either hugely willing to sacrifice uh significant portions of their large opportunity to earn a salary. Uh and we have examples of that currently and in the past, or you get individuals who are to the point that Counsel Watkins or Mr. Watkins made earlier, that they're supplemented by either retirement pension or or a significant other job that allows him the flexibility to do this job. If however you pay a uh living salary uh that is commensurate with the the median in St. Albert, you open up the the job of councillor to a whole new uh demographic. People who are uh willing to take on four years and and still be able to raise their family at the same time. Now, we can argue the number of eighty-six thousand. Uh whether it's right or whether it's wrong in in relation to the work of the of the committee. But the fact is eighty-six is is linked to a particular number that's relevant in St. Albert. And so while it doesn't matter what we vote on, uh people are going to say uh you know, you've given money to yourself as councillors. Uh so there is no dodging the uh the decision that council's going to have to make around a remuneration. Uh so we're going to have to make a decision one way or another. And uh so for twenty twenty-five, is eighty-six the right number? Uh it's as good a number as 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 what is relevant in our community. And so for twenty twenty-five, I think I can live with eighty-six.
Counsel Kilik.
Uh, thank you. Um yeah, e- eighty-six thousand. I I can't imagine any other resident uh living in St. Albert thinking that in two years that their salary would go from, you know, fifty-five to eighty-six. Um or a- any equivalent percentage like that. I I can't even work out what the percentage is. It's it's like a thirty percent uh raise, but um in two years. So I I'm I'm not a eh at all worried about voting on on something for twenty twenty-five. I'm not voting on my salary. It it has nothing to do with me. It 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 is really about what is the value uh of the job that we're doing uh going forward in twenty twenty-five. And um looking at what our residents are also going through. They, I don't think any of them are getting this kind of raise or even a promise of of that kind of a raise in the future. It it also really um i- is a number that is seemingly has just been pulled out of out of one presentation of of without any other supporting data. I I could probably look up, you know, what are the average salary in single person in in St. Albert and, you know, you can get that information off Stats Canada database, but I don't know if it's eighty-six thousand. But somehow we've just magically landed on that number. And without any uh support from administration and without any opportunity for them to look at it and make a a recommendation, we we could turn this back to the committee and ask for their input. Um, but somehow we've just magically landed on eighty-six thousand dollars uh in twenty twenty-five without any of what what we would normally see as a backgrounder and analysis done by a committee on any other project that we voted on. We would have that supporting information and clarity. We don't have that today. And I uh for that reason, I have no um ability to know whether eighty-six thousand dollars is the right number or not. It just seems like it's been pulled out of a hat. And for for that uh reason, I I can't support it.
Any further speakers on this one? Um I'll point out to all of you that there's in my opinion, the most important part of this motion is the part about being full-time. Regardless of what you what we're paid, whether it's fifty-five, seventy, or eighty-six. Uh it, the comment was made earlier that nothing would change, but I can tell you, if I was sitting in the mayor's chair in two thousand and twenty-five after that election, I would expect full-time work. If you're going to get paid, you've got to get work full-time. So that's, you know, that's why the conversation um around the start time and date is important to me, but the, to me, this is, I'm going to totally support this, by the way, uh regardless if it's seventy or eighty-six. The, this is what you're telling people who are putting their name on the ballot to expect, and that's what they, that is what is required. Don't expect that. Uh hopefully, this will um allow, you know, single parents uh families of lower income to to step away from a current job to take on the public role of of councillor. Because if you know you're full-time, you know, it's it's as Counsel Veremansky part of that, it's hard to have a second job. Counsel Jolly is super fortunate that she was able to find something that worked in her schedule, and I completely applaud her for that, but it's not easy. So um to me, the the important part of this is the full-time piece, and I don't want this to fail over a number. And I I honestly believe seventy was pulled out of the air too, and so was eighty-six. So the important part is the full-time. Counsel Mackay, did you have your name up that I just jumped the gun on?
No, and I apologize. If if you want to have closing arguments, I'm fine with it.
No, I'm done.
No, I guess my my point was the is I share many of the comments of Counsel Kilik. I mean, I'm I'm my biggest challenge is always with identifying my own salary and voting on my own salary. But because this is the date that's uh put on the motion, we're not doing that. I'm not voting on my own salary. Again, the number seems a little bit challenging to me, because as pointed out, we just don't have any background or we don't have any information as to all we have in front of, had in front of us was recommendations of a committee from administration. So, I mean, I could only harken back. And I was thinking as you were talking, uh Counsel Kilik and even yourself, Ray, I'll call you Ray, so I don't call you councillor. Um, back in nineteen seventy-eight, I started with the city of Edmonton as a police officer, and I was making fourteen thousand dollars to fourteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty-three cents. And uh two years later, and for Greg Harvey, you you want to talk about good negotiators, we got a thirty-five percent raise increase two years later. And I was making more than my dad had be worked for twenty-five years. So I jumped up to almost uh thirty-one thousand something, a little bit more. Don't do the math. That's and I I thought that this is crazy. I mean, who would get a thirty percent salary increase raise based on on that? But now when we look at it, it might happen again in my lifetime. I'm going to maybe potentially see, and again, I didn't work out the the math like yourself. But I mean, it's a, it that's a substantial jump, but I mean, I recognize all the great great comments, because I mean, you know, um you're right, we're going to have a potentially of this pa- uh if we move forward on on a on a different number, um and we're going to have full-time. You're going to have potentially people, you're going to attract people to this job that maybe weren't available. But I got to also remind you, there were lawyers, accountants previously in this job. And I I take Counsel Broadhead's point about the fact that maybe they had additional time on their hands and were able and also salary that they were able to do, and the job was maybe significantly different ten, fifteen years ago when these judges, or I mean, well, I guess one's a judge now, um were sitting in this bench. So my biggest issue um is in relation to the fact that um it's it's just the salary. So uh but I'm I'm willing to accept, I'm willing to accept the will of council.
Call for the vote. Oh, no, Counsel Joy, close.
Thank you. Um so I I first want to a- address Counsel Brigamancy's comments about the date. Um so I I absolutely agree with you that a councillor working full-time now should have a different um compensation. And that's why I've got a motion uh dealing with that. So uh this is not a- addressing the kind of twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five range. I'm not opposed to an increase in that timeframe, but that's the next motion. So this motion is dealing with next term. So just to that point. And then I I I guess I want to reiterate um Mayor Heron's comments about the one of the key points of this motion is moving to full-time. Um my expectation as a resident is the next council will be a full-time council. My expectation will be that no, all of them are at the pride flag raising on on whenever it is in twenty twenty-six. My expectation is all of them will attend the meetings with the school board, with um the Chamber of Commerce, um those those really important meetings um that are are not necessarily possible. Um if you have a full-time other commitment or another job or other responsibilities professionally. Um and so that is very important. And then to the point, the the eighty-six thousand dollars, that makes it accessible to people like me. So that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, call for the vote. Vote is closed. Sorry. And that motion uh passes by a majority with Counsel Kilik and Counsel Mackay opposed. All right, so that deals with twenty twenty-five. Um now we're going to go back to your first motion, which is more focused on per diems for this term, Counsel Jolly. I want to make sure that you are comfortable with it reading. you are comfortable with it reading like for, from July first, twenty twenty-three to end of, end of this term. Cause I think that will influence votes. You, you mean, if, just phrase ourselves.
That was the intention for this, to be for, you know, all of you who just got back to, from SCM and things like that.
Right. All right, uh, just so you know, councillor Jolly, I will prob, I'm going to split out D, the Alberta municipalities piece of it, just for voting purposes. Um, but that's my only split. Any questions from members of council on the per diem conversation? Councillor Mackay?
Yeah, just to councillor Jolly, the twelve thousand number, I imagine you figured you'd be getting this question. Do you, where did you arrive at twelve?
I, I actually don't remember. Um, I'd be certainly open to, to a different number. I, I don't have a strong opinion about it. I know at the time, I was looking at the caps.
I was wondering whether.
I think she just wanted to cap it.
I just wanted to cap it. I know Morenville has a caps, First Grove has a cap. Um, but, but I'm open to a different number.
Yeah, I, I I mean, I guess that's one of the sticking points for me in relation to the twelve thousand. I just don't know how we got at it. Uh, but I don't wanna get into debate. I was just kinda curious as to if there was a formula you used. I know whether you used Alberta municipalities. He had some background from other, other communities.
No, just, just reading the other policies from, from surrounding municipalities.
Okay, um, Mr. Hiltz, you had your hand up.
Yeah, so I just wanted to clear, a clarification question uh, for councillor Jolly, um, or to members of council, uh, through the mayor. Um, currently, council receives essentially twelve thousand a year, uh, broken down for technology, travel, uh, conferences, um, professional development, et cetera. Would the per diems replace that, or would they be on top of that? And that's, I just wanted to kind of get clarity for that.
Say that again.
Would the per diems that, that councillor Jolly is putting on forward, would they replace the current twelve thousand that council has access to? Or would they be on top of it?
This has got nothing to do with technology budgets or anything, has it?
There's travel and there's other things on that and professional development. So there would be some crossover, but I just was curious.
Councillor Jolly, did you hear that question?
Yeah, it has nothing to do with that. It would be on top of, yeah. Cause that's not paid to us. Like, I don't get paid for technology. I get reimbursed for it, but.
Yeah, and, and getting a registration for convention paid for doesn't reimburse her, right? So, but she has to take time off work. That, that would be the. Okay, just so we got that clarity. Um, any more questions? Cause I wanna make sure questions are out of the way before we get into debate.
I just, um, Mayor, we're not gonna do my motion on the twenty twenty, cause we're, we're not doing a base salary now. We're going right to the per diems. Is that the intention?
Yeah, unless base salary for twenty twenty-three can be debated now, or it can be de- debated in twenty year nine point one.
I, I guess it's still just the same point as councillor Mackay had before, was that we typically do base, and then we discuss additions on that. Right now, we're doing it backwards.
So do you wanna do a base for twenty-three right now?
Yeah.
Then you need to put a motion for it.
Yep, that, that's the one I sent.
Okay, but I didn't see that one, so.
It's, okay. So it said effective July first, twenty twenty-three, councillors are compensated an annual salary of seventy thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, we can go back.
No, go up to seventy now, and that'll go up to eighty-six.
Seventy now, then eighty-six after that.
Yeah. Okay, so did we get that amendment? Or sorry, it's actually not.
It's like, it's not amendments, it's a motion, but yeah, they have it.
Councillor Jolly, before we get into your per diems, we're gonna have a conversation about base effect of July twenty-three.
So m- my concern is that I would okay, yeah, no, I'll leave it. I, I just wouldn't, I wouldn't support both, so it's just a.
No, that's, and I think that's the, the problem that everybody's having a hard time with.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, then I can wait until after hers.
Okay. It, it, it doesn't matter.
Well, I.
You know the intention of both motions. It's either per diems or an increase. Vote for the one you're familiar with, or don't vote for either.
That's, that's. Okay, I'll wait for mine. I'll let.
It, it's legislatively very awkward.
If the per diems pass, then you might not support her, or you might.
But, but then her timeframe is different. So her timeframe, her timeframe is starts at, so the per diems are at for um, twenty twenty-five.
No, there's, it's right in the motion, twenty-three.
I, they stop in twenty twenty-five? Is that sort of clarification? So then the per diems would stop?
The remainder of this term, she's talking per diems.
Okay, all right. I, I mean, I still think you start at the base and you move up, but I, I don't.
I agree that we should do the base first. No, yes, yours first. Cause the per diems may not have to go forward.
It's an either or. I agree with Mayor Heron. And so it's like, do you want seventy, or do you want up to seventy? That's gonna be the question. So I, councillor Jolly had on the floor, and understanding that, I, I agree that I don't have to supersede her.
Councillor Jolly. I, oh, councillor Killick, questions?
Uh, yes, so I, I just wanna clarify, the expectation, as noted in, in this, is that per diem would be paid for council-appointed committees. Is, is that so? My attending the environmental uh, committee, which is all volunteers in the evening, giving up their time for free as residents. They're coming to that meeting for free. And I'm getting paid?
I think that's her intention.
Yeah, that's the standard across the region. I don't know any councillors that don't have that outside of St. Albert.
I, I, I just, I just wanna be clear. And when I, when I attend Edmonton Salutes Committee meeting that is, is struggling to raise uh, awareness and, and donors.
Mayor Heron, it sounds like we're in debate.
No, I, so you asked, you asked a question, and she said yes. So anything you're appointed to by this body, you would get a per diem for. That's the intention. So if you don't like that, you could take out council-appointed committees.
Oh. And, and what's and formal meetings between council and stakeholder? Could you give me an example of that?
I think so. Councillor Jolly, I'll jump in there if you don't mind, because it even was pointed out in the background that this needs to be defined. So, yes, you mentioned two, school boards and chamber. Um, I, I'm actually gonna look at Mr. Fletcher.
Right.
First, how do we define those? I'm gonna go to Mr. Fletcher for it, because we could probably do that definition subsequent to this. I, I agree upon as a council, what?
Y- yes, your worship, I think that's the way we tackle this, is come up with a list, um, provided, not, not doing the work if it doesn't pass. It does, we'd come up with a recommended list, uh, you know, things like EMRB, uh, regional bodies, uh, stakeholders, formal stakeholders would probably intuitively be where we go.
Yeah, but it does need to be defined. It would probably be laid out in a policy eventually.
Correct, there would be policy amendments coming, and we would attempt to lay out the list as much as possible, and we would say in any other meetings that council is required.
Right, yeah.
Okay. I, I still have one follow-up question.
Go ahead.
So, um, by turning this back, it says to the remuneration committee review, w- I'd, I'd like to just la, ask administration, would the remuneration committee be amenable to coming up with a definition of, of what per diems were? Uh, or would we have to strike a new committee? Cause I, I'm concerned that the
Yeah, councillor, I think, my understanding of that is that this would become part of future remuneration committees' calculus. It wouldn't be referred back to this committee.
Is that your intention, councillor Jolly?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. I, I just wanted to be clear, cause it, I mean, the, the committee hadn't, they recommended not to do per diems, and yet we're asking them.
Yeah, and.
So it would be a new committee.
And I'm a little confused, councillor Jolly, cause you just, you've, you've stopped the per diems at the next elections. We're not having a remuneration committee till after the next election.
Right.
They, I mean, they could discuss it, whether they wanted it on top of. I mean, I don't think.
What you're saying is it should be part of every remuneration committee conversation from now going forward.
Yeah, whether, whether they recommend it or not is fine.
Yeah, you were, I would just say it already is. Um, so it is part and parcel of the, the considerations that each uh, remuneration committee makes. Per diems are options that they can consider.
That part of the motion was recommended by administration, so I accepted it. I have no issues.
Okay. I don't know if it's really necessary, but we can keep it in. Um, questions still? Are you done, councillor Killick?
No, I'm good now, thank you.
Questions are good? All right. Oh, and councillor Beremanski? You know questions? Councillor Hughes.
Uh, thank you. So I'm looking to administration, hey Carrie, cause you're the one looking at me right now. Um, it says in the background that you actually require additional staffing to be able to handle this. So the motion doesn't reflect the additional staffing costs, for example. Um, I think it says you need um, a, a point four-four FTE. So I'm, I'm just, I'm not even sure who to ask. I'm not even sure if it's admin, but the motion doesn't reflect the costs that they were saying that are gonna be necessary to do it, especially in light of the fact that we don't have the software compatibility under the gate.
Is there, yes. I think for the question, councillor Hughes, and the members of council, we would, we'd have two options. One is uh, staffing a point four-four, or the other one is uh, to um, buy the additional software program, and we'd build that into the twenty twenty-four budget.
And then what would it, for you, you'll have to do it now, not in the twenty twenty-four. So shouldn't there still be a motion coming out somewhere for this year? Added to it then?
Yeah, we'd have to do a forecast for the remainder of the year.
Just, all right, Diane, yeah.
Uh, thank you, councillor Hughes. I'm, just because it, it was a relatively small amount, we just didn't put in a budget adjustment. We said we, we would absorb it and forecast it into this year, and then build it into next year's budget is what we, um, what we thought. But then now this motion has changed though, um, from what it was originally, and the fact that this is now kind of only for two years. We're gonna have to set up all these processes um, for, kind of for a very short period of time, and then they'll go away as of twenty twenty-five.
Right, so I wouldn't wanna buy the software.
Right, so we, we would look at a term position, um, probably or a portion, uh, FTE term to manage it for the course of that timeframe is likely where we'd go.
And it's just, it's really just about the manual entry into the new, the HR software, right?
Um, it actually has to be done actually almost outside of the new HR system completely. So it involves like a lot of coordination between like accounts payable and human resources, cause there's all of the, the getting it into the T-pours, and then they have to manually enter it into the new system, system, and we have to keep track of it kind of separately. So it's, it's, it's a little labor-intensive.
So shouldn't we have in addition to the motion then to recognize that?
We, we certainly could, um, you know, add forty-four thousand dollars, or I guess, I guess I would say it'd be half of that, cause it'd be half a year um, to twenty twenty-three out of the stabilization fund if we wanted to. Um, I just feel like with other, um, you know, surpluses and, and ebbs and flows that we have within our budget, we can, we can probably absorb it without putting us into an overall deficit for the city. So it, it's up to you if you wanted to.
This system is just so new, so it's hard to predict, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause I can guarantee you, cause we used to get per diems for EMRB and a couple of things. And when we, when those were removed, I'm guaranteeing we didn't take an FTE, like, cause we just would do it manually ourselves. We would submit. I feel like it's like, just, it's like overtime. Yeah, exactly. Could, could you just not log it in as overtime?
It, it is a capacity issue. Um, there's no doubt about it. So um, could probably manage it a bunch of ways. Again, that's why we didn't specifically ask for money this year. We, we can manage it internally this year. Um, and whether that money is for a short, a term position, or that money's for additional hours, but I mean, we would figure that out ultimately. Uh, but we would be looking at probably codifying that in budget twenty twenty-four deliberations for next year to see us through to twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so ju- just so we're clear, there will be an additional cost going forward for the next two years, though, if this motion does pass. Okay, that's it. All right, I see no more questions. So councillor Jolly, go ahead on debate um, for the first three of your um motions on per diems.
Okay, thank you. So the intent of this motion is just to reflect kind of what, what councillor Beremanski was saying about the um, workload, if you are treating this position like a full-time position. Um, so this gives, you know, we were all elected as part-time city councillors. Um, and this kind of gives the flexibility for um, individual members of council to choose um, whether they are part-time or full-time. Um, if you look at our uh, attendance tracking, um, I've got Mayor Heron's kind of tracking up, and there's mandatory meetings that include an Edmonton Global Stake Shareholder Briefing, Nominating Committee, um, Agenda Planning, uh, and so forth. I mean, just meetings like that, you know, meeting with the Chamber of Commerce, meeting of the school, the school board. None of those meetings are mandatory. Um, really even attendance at all, all sorts of meetings are not mandatory per se. Um, so providing a per diem the way all the other municipalities do, um, just is an opportunity to, to compensate members of council who are attending really valuable um meetings or gatherings or events. Um, and so that's, that's what the intent of this is. That's all. Thank you.
Councillor Hughes.
Mayor Heron, you weren't sure if we're gonna need to book supper? I would go with a booking supper.
Pardon?
You know how you said before, I don't know if we're gonna need to book supper or not. Yeah, we're gonna go with supper. This meeting's never gonna end. Um, so I appreciate uh, what, what you're saying, councillor Jolly. I appreciate the fact that, yeah, there are, most places are doing per diems. Um, but we're also looking at a stopgap right now, because the pay raise just went up substantially in twenty twenty-five. And we are looking at additional costs just to administer it. So in my mind, we're gonna pay forty-four thousand dollars to get a few extra thousand dollars, or we could just do the motion that mine follows, which is just say seventy thousand is a stopgap between the two, and just call it a day, and actually it could potentially cost less money than it would if we actually had administration administer a bunch of per diems for the next two and a half years. So um, especially because it's gonna be ending in two and a half years in your motion. It, this is a, a lot of money, which um, regardless of whether or not um, you personally are taking this as a full-time or part-time job. I think that, just looking to you, councillor Jolly, for example, cause I know that you, you are balancing too. It is stressful trying to balance the two jobs. It is. And, you know, the compensation for doing that, I think also just needs to also be reflected, regardless of whether you're trying to do it and work another job because of the current pay schedule. Or just you don't have a pension coming in for other members of this council. Or you do have a pension coming in, but it's substantially larger amount of time commitment than you thought you had initially. So um, I just, I think that the solution is not necessarily to do the per diems, but rather just to do the flat rate, especially with recognizing the additional costs that are gonna be involved. So I won't be supporting this by doing ten standing attention behind it.
Anyone else on debate? Oh, councillor Broadhead.
Thank you, madam mayor. I'm actually not sure how I'm gonna put this quite yet, uh, because I hear both arguments, and to me, they both have merit. Um, the one thing about uh, per diems for a limited amount of time is we get some experience about whether or not per diems actually uh, do the work that they're intended to do, and that's compensate people for showing up. Uh, on the other hand, um, the idea of the base uh, speaks to the, to the job that we're doing. So um, I'm gonna listen to closing and then uh, see how it goes.
Okay. Councillor Mackay.
Well, Wes, I usually count on you to sway me, but
Exactly.
And you haven't done it. Uh, because like you, I'll have to wait for closing, because right now, it, this is a stopgap measure in my, and, and that's something I, I guess I caught late. But at the same time, there are many members of council that, for whatever reason, can't attend or don't attend some of these uh, um, meetings and, and conferences because of, you know, like I said, either personal choice, or because of their own work commitments, or family commitments. And for me, I can attend. So I will be able to take advantage of this, but others won't. So there's a fundamental fairness thing for me going on here in the interim. Whereas if it was full-time, the expectation is, is that you would have, you should be attending, or at least it'd be a appendix A of those events that are mandatory attendance if you're a full-time. So for the remainder of this term, So for the remainder of this term, um, there'll be members of council that will be able to actually take advantage of the per diems where others won't. And, and, and so there's that principle of fairness that comes in for me. Um, I mean, it might, it might actually increase participation, but I mean, again, that's, I don't know what the reasons are behind why council, councillors can't attend some of the events that they're at. So I'm going to wait for closing arguments, but at the same time, right now I'm leaning towards not supporting this.
Councilor Killick?
Uh, thank you. Um, I, I, I just go back. I think that residents elected us um, to represent them at, at all things council does, whether that's meeting with the chamber, um, meeting without loud, meeting, uh, our, our committee meetings, um, going to the opening of the, the farmer's market, representing the city at uh, uh, Rainmaker Rodeo and you know, there, there are all these events that um, had residents elected us to represent them at. And yes, they're not the formal council meetings. Uh, I, I understand that. That's, that is part of the job. But the other part of the job, and I, I absolutely know this, it, to, to me, it was, there's a much broader scope to council than just the formal activities and all of these other things that have been mentioned that would, would fall under per diems. Um, I, I think they're the expectation of residents is that I would be there to, to represent them um, at as many of those as possible. And if, if it, if I'm able to, I, I will be there. Um, so I, I think it, it becomes unfair for some other people that would say, well, I'm, I'm busy in the evening. I can't go to those events. I can't uh, I can't represent residents at, at the library board meeting or, or whatever it is, long list. But I, I think this adds a layer of complexity and imbalance that, uh, could be addressed through uh, a subsequent motion, um, coming up. So I'm, I'm not in favor of, of per diems.
Okay, I guess it's my turn. So first of all, I'm going to point out that I appreciate this motion coming from Councilor Jolly. And she's probably the least likely to benefit from its result because she has a full-time job. Um, and so I get where she's coming from. I get her heart and, and the fact that she recognizes because we are a part-time council and that she can't attend things, that she doesn't need to get compensated extra, which is we ran in twenty, in 21 with the expected part-timeness and, is that word, part-timeness? And, and the salary. There has been an imbalance of, of workload since the day I was elected in 2010. Some councillors just attend everything. And as a councillor, I was one of them. I didn't have another job. I dove into this and I, I really wholeheartedly took part, but we're part-time. I don't, I, I cannot, and I tell you right now, as mayor, I find it difficult to ask you all to attend more than you do because you're part-time. But I do see the value in, in the things that she's pointed out here, which is, of course, the FCM Alberta Municipalities. By the way, our acronym is not AM. I was a little offended by that. ABMUDIS. Um, the training sessions I, I think are important. The council-appointed committees, I, I know you had a problem with it, but it is standard in the region. And not this council and even last council, but in the past, there's been council members that have no committees. They just don't have any, and but they got paid the same amount as other councillors who were stepping up and doing more work. So what I find per diems does is it balances out the imbalance. Um, you know, I have, I have no opinion on whether $12,000 is, is the right number to, to cap out of, but I do appreciate the cap in the motion. That, that, that is a good call. Um, but for for this term, uh, this, this is not so much voting on your own salary because if you tend more, you get paid more. So it requires more work, showing up at some of the things that you mentioned, Councilor Killick, like this afternoon at Pride, that, that, they're not, they're your attendance and you're it's, it's not expected, but it's nice to have you there. Um, especially for pitchers to support our groups, but it's things like the meeting with the chamber when we actually have to be working and coming up with solutions and not just standing there getting our pitch taken. These are, these are things that Councilor Jolly has identified that take time and take effort and take work and take participation. And it disappoints me when not all of us are there for some of these formal stakeholder meetings yet to be defined. Uh, but for sure, and, and there are other municipalities that actually have it in their policy, what's mandatory and what's not, and gets, and they get paid for that. So as a stopgap, um, I'm supportive of per diems. I think it works. I, I get that there's going to be some issues, um, with pay, but we'll figure that out. And and you know, it, I think everybody's thinking in their head right now, it's either this or increase the base salary for 2023. I, I I will firmly stand by what, um, Councilor Walkin said earlier that you ran on what you knew and, and you knew it was part-time and you knew it was fifty-some thousand a year. We should not be increasing that unless you're going to put in more work and attend some of these events. I will call for the vote.
Can I close?
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Jolly, go ahead.
Um.
I felt like this was my vote for your most.
So I, I, I'm supporting this in, in large part because $70,000 per year is too much for a part-time, um, role. And that's what we were elected to do. Um, I, I want to address, uh, Councilor Mackay's point about, you know, you, you have an opportunity to, to go to these events that, that I maybe don't have. And I think that's a great thing. I, I don't see an issue with that. I don't see an issue with you getting paid more than I do. Um, because the city of St. Albert is benefiting from your attendance. Um, but it still addresses the, the issue of, um, you know, having, having a, an take-home pay, you know, including the, the, um, including per diems that is, is reasonable so that you can make this a full-time commitment. Um, if you're not wealthy, if you don't have a pension and so forth. So, um, that's what this motion is intended to do, and that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Call for the vote. Motion's, oh, sorry, voting's closed. And that motion passes with Councilor Remansky and Hughes opposed. So, um, I had split out D, um, that per diems match Alberta Municipalities per diems for Board of Directors. Uh, oh, I'll do, I'll say why I'm against that in debate, Councilor Jolly, but I'll, I'll open it up for your comments. Unless anyone has questions about the amount. Okay, go ahead.
I'd also be open to kind of matching that up with like the province of Alberta. I know when I was appointed to the, uh, Social Work Board, um, the province of Alberta had per diems. I'd be happy to match it to that or something else if um, someone else has a, a suggestion.
The only reason I, I'm opposed to it, Councilor Jolly, is Alberta Municipalities is very much a, a hybrid of public dollars and private dollars. And so their per diems are a little bit higher than, than normal. Like so looking at you guys real quick, is there, is there another benchmark that we could use or can we just figure that out later?
Yep, uh, we, we would have to do a quick scan and I think we, we, we know what the comparative municipalities use and we could work it off that.
Okay. Would you be okay, um, holding off on that, Councilor Jolly? Okay.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you.
Okay, and then we did two. Are, are we waiting for you to go to nine point one or do you want to do something now?
Um, that doesn't really matter. We can wait till nine point one, just so that I can feel like we moved somewhere on this page on the agenda.
Okay, let's just do three. Councilor Jolly's motion said that administration bring an update of the policy um, that have been impacted by today's decisions. So read that out, Councilor Jolly.
Uh, I already read it, but I could read it again. Um, apologies, I've got a whole bunch of screens open. Um, that administration bring to council an update to council policy CCO three, City Council Remuneration and Expense Reimbursement, incorporating all approved motions impacting the policy.
All right. Uh, Councilor Remansky, do you have a question? No? Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, I, I have a question, Mayor Heron. Uh, so what is, how, was this notion necessary? Wouldn't we automatically be getting an update?
I think it was recommended by administration to make sure this was included, right?
Yes, we would like it on the books. However, to Councilor Hughes's point, we would still make the changes because now the policy won't be aligned with the motion on the, that just passed. So yes, we will have to make the changes regardless.
Okay, so really it's just a rhetorical question. Okay.
All right. Do we have any comment and debate on this? Because as you pointed out, it was all right, call for the vote. Unless you want to debate it, Councilor Jolly. Voting's closed and that motion passes unanimously. Let's take a break. Three thirty is now we're going to get into committee of the whole recommendations. And I think we just need to take a breath because I'm need to stretch, um, and we'll figure out dinner, I guess. Five thirty? Sure. Okay. All right, uh, it's three thirty-five-ish. That's quarter to ten minutes. All right, um. We are now on to nine point one, which is standing committee of the whole um recommendations. Which is on page. Thirty-three of our council package. Um, I don't, I it's got Mr. Hiltz's name here, but I don't, I assume you don't have a presentation or do you?
No, your worship, I do not have a presentation. Basically, we'd be just having to approve uh two of the every five motions that were there. Um, the one motion would be on the um. The sixteen week paternal leave and the other one would be on the aligning um. Council increases to non-union city staff because everything else was covered under the last.
All right, I'm gonna actually turn to you, Council Hughes, to see because we talked about when you might put a motion forward. I just want to see what your plan is.
Yeah, you know, we could vote on these two and then put my motion forward after that, just as a german motion as a standalone.
Okay. So yeah, let's get these other way, kind of. Okay. All right, can I have a member, any questions before we go to the motions? Ah, the joy committee, we've got all the questions done. So I'm looking to remember council to make, uh, we can do both these at once, I'm sure. Go ahead, Council Kilik.
That the recommendations from the council renumeration review committee report submitted on March twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three concerning the following be implemented July first, twenty twenty-three. A that mayor and councilor should be eligible for a sixteen-week parental leave paid at their normal remuneration rate. And two, the, are we going to split them? Are we going to vote on? And that the recommendations from the council renumeration review committee report submitted on March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three concerning the following be implemented effective April, twenty twenty-four. That the annual cost of living adjustment for the mayor and councilors should be aligned to the annual non-union city employee increase.
Awesome. I will accept those. Any comments?
Uh, yeah, just as opening comments, I'm very pleased to see that um rental leave is part of our uh recommendation here. Um, I think when this was first debated, I made the comment that I was glad to see that we were in the. Twenty-first century um. Paternity leave uh is important, um, whether it's uh. For a mother or a or a father or a any other kind of partner that um may require this leave and we should recognize again that this is. Helping to support a diverse group of individuals joining council and uh recognizing the importance of providing uh support to family. The other um. Second item, uh, rather than having cost of living increase, um, I think it was roughly five percent. This aligns it to our. Our non-union city employees um. But in my way of thinking, this, this is why would we be any any different or any better um than our or other employees that do so much work for us? So I'm I'm happy to see us uh take this step to align it around our uh employee increase.
Uh, Council Hughes, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, you know, actually, I don't even know how to vote on this right now because I bet I'm probably going to support it. I don't I don't know because. It's quite ironic that we are implementing a recommendation for something that had to be done right now for something that we know that no one on council will be taking advantage of. Like this was actually the least of all motions that had to be put forward for July first, twenty twenty-three. Uh, there's no one pregnant. I don't think anyone's going to get pregnant in the next bit. Uh, and yet that was what was being recommended to be done immediately. And then the other thing we just need to realize is just this relates to the uh the costing, the pay increases with um. With the unions is that last year was an anomaly in that we had high inflation. We've had plenty of years where it's been point five or zero for that matter. So. Um, using last year as a baseline of what was forward perpetually or even usually is um. Not exactly accurate. So. In some cases, the staff got more and in some cases they got less than what we got, but at the time of the time of, but it was not always a five percent. It just happened to be that way because inflation is rampant right now. That's it.
Anyone else on debate? Anything to close?
Uh, yeah, um, for the first one, I I know it'll be a shock to my wife, but um we're we're planning to adopt and uh. So I I could equally uh. Apply for sixteen-week parental leave. Uh, I think that's important, whether this takes effect or not. Um. It it sends a signal. It it is recognizing for future that the importance of being able to support family uh is a. In our community is a key indicator of who we are and uh in in particular. Um, although I I still strongly believe it, it can apply across all all sectors. Um. It it may have been a barrier to having young women um bring that balance to council in in future. So. I I certainly support the sixteen-week parental leave and again aligning our. Our salary. Why would we think that we we would be different than the rest of the employees that had do so much work for us? So. Um, I I certainly support both of these.
All right, that's closing arguments. Call for the vote. Vote is closed and that passes by. Uh. Majority, so with Council Bermansky post. Council Bermansky, your name's on my screen. It was wasn't there before closing, was it? Okay, you're good? Okay. All right, Council Hughes.
Okay, so the motion is what you had up there before, Janice, that the effective July first, twenty twenty-three council is a composite annual salary of seventy thousand.
Any questions on this one? Go ahead, Council Hughes, I accept the motion.
Okay, uh, initially I was suggesting in that we could do it either the per diems or the salary adjustment. Um. The per diems passed, so that's is what it is. Um, I think for the majority of council, they're not going to gain twelve thousand dollars in per diems collected a year. Um. And if they are, we can definitely revisit this. But. I I just look at the fact that the council, the committee brought forward the recommendation of seventy thousand and what they did not share or explain is what they think the job will be different in of October, twenty twenty-five versus today. So they said, well, based on what their interviews are, we are currently working full-time hours. Based on what the interviews are, this is what the job entails. They didn't say the job is going to be different. In in twenty twenty-five. And really, it isn't. The expectations and the opportunities and everything else will remain the same for what you can attend, what you're supposed to do and your responsibilities. The only difference is just the time will have passed. So when I look at what we just agreed to, which is eighty-six thousand dollars in two and a half years, and then to say that we think that this council is only worth fifty-eight thousand. And then the next council with zero days experience on the job is now worth eighty-six thousand. Um, I think there should just be a stopgap in between the two. To reflect the fact that it's it's a substantial increase then and not everybody on this council, even today, has a pension to back up or. Has a very wealthy spouse to pay for everything. And so. If you're going to do a fair living wage, do a fair living wage. That's as simple as that. And the problem is that this is never a fun debate as we've now done this for only two and some hours now. Which is equivalent to being in hell for two and a half hours. I think for most people have to debate this publicly. But um my motion before was to do seventy without the per diems. We've thrown the per diems in, we can see how the per diems work. You have to recognize that Sturgeon County's A two thousand plus per diems. So even at what we're doing, it's still not out of the ballpark of what other people are doing. Um, so. That's how I'm looking at this is if you didn't have a pension to fall back on. Would fifty-eight thousand still be a comfortable living for you if you didn't have that going forward and not just talk about the next council? We've already agreed to the um breaking the rules of not counting on the next council with a pretty emotion. So if you say you don't want to vote into the salary, you already did it in the last motion. The only question is whether or not you think that the base should be seventy or you think the base should be fifty-eight and that there should be a twenty-eight thousand dollar increase for the new council in two and a half years. And I think that at least having some kind of a stopgap measure between the two of them would make sense. That's it.
Council brought it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the remuneration committee uh did some work around what the uh the salary is uh. Appropriate for today's um. Council and unfortunately, I think they failed to sort of add an inflationary figure or some recognition that. Their implementation was three years out. So there is some merit to the debate that the the that the job that they reviewed is worth today seventy. Um, per year. We don't have a whole lot of experience with uh per diems. Uh. I from most of us uh will take home as a result of per diems, um, but we don't know that. And uh. So uh from my perspective, if we go back to that original intent of the remuneration committee, I think this this motion makes sense.
Council Bermansky.
Hey, um, the comments I have towards this is, um, you know, I appreciate the direction of the per diem, but. It's really about a fair living wage and it's been, you know, it's been made concrete by several members of council that fifty-eight thousand isn't a fair living wage for full-time workload, which we do commit. Um, I'm that person that basically shows up for everything and um I don't think that, you know, um. I think that if your salary is not a fair living wage, then you have people chasing per diems. And sometimes um that's not good either because it's, you know, it's an event that may not be beneficial to the city or or beneficial to um, you know, particular events that are going on or you may miss something in the city because you're going to something that's paying you a per diem. So. Um, I believe that we all, you know, do a great job on council. I again show up for absolutely everything. And fifty-eight thousand was a substantial wage decrease to me. I don't have a pension. And you know, I committed to the job. Um, but the thing I didn't, I wasn't prepared for is the time commitment for the job because that was never portrayed uh from the get-go. But again, I do the best job I can, show up to everything and seventy thousand is barely uh living wage for that. So I'm in support.
Council Kilik.
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. I I won't be able to support this and it actually goes back to something that Mr. Watkins said that while he was on council. Uh, he couldn't in in fair conscience vote uh for. A salary increase uh for himself uh knowing and I I'm in the same boat that. I knew what the salary was for the four-year term when I was elected. Um. And I I I signed up for that. I went in fully aware. Uh, what the compensation was. Uh, clearly. Did not understand the the workload. Um, but that's a separate issue. What we're talking about here is pure. Uh. Salary and voting for our own salary increase. And I again, I. I can't in good conscience vote for my own salary increase and I couldn't vote for an increase. This large. When I look at. What other residents are struggling with uh in in the community. They're working. Full-time, maybe not making great amount of money. Um, but they're working full-time and. They don't have the luxury to vote themselves uh a pay increase of any amount. And for that reason, both reasons that I. I can't support it for the dollar amount and I certainly can't support it for me, myself voting uh on my own salary increase.
Council Jolly, Council McKype, before I go in. Go ahead.
Excuse me, I apologize. I I think consistently, whether it was last term or this term is had a very similar uh opinion as just being expressed by Council Kilik. It just puts you in a very challenging and difficult job. I I am one of the fortunate ones that do have a pension that I. Uh, I can rely on and and. I'm just always amazed by the counselors that are doing the work they're doing based on what um the salary was. But that being said. Um, we all, I mean, I knew what the salary was um prior to, and yes, I was on term on council before, but. Quite frankly, in twenty seventeen I ran and I didn't even look at what the salary was. Uh, I was um just. Uh, basically running for the position. Uh, and so I'm going to remain consistent. I actually thought in the last vote that the per diems was a good saw-off. Initially, I. Didn't see the, I saw a similar argument in relation to the per diems, but actually I see that a little bit differently uh with some of the uh comments from my fellow counselors now. So. I saw that as a a good compromise for the for many of the counselors that actually are still doing the work but are not getting compensated for it. And it was, yes, it is a stopgap measure. And yes, it potentially does cause some confusion and some administrative challenges, but I I believe that it's still a solid compromise. But I can't, I can't vote on my particular salary. And so I'm going to remain consistent and not support that this motion. But I understand the intent. And I understand the challenges of my fellow counselors.
All right, I'll be quick. I do not support this motion. The reason we have a council remuneration committee is so that we don't have to be caught in voting on our and deciding on our own salary. In two thousand and twenty-one, all seven of us ran with a number that was public and expected. Those of us who were on council before knew the workload. The recommendations coming out of the committee were seventy thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-five, and that was based on full-time. We are not moving to full-time in two thousand and twenty-three. So why would we expect more money? I I I would completely support it if I could, you know, have Natalie back full-time. But I I can't ask her to quit her job. So you get part-time pay for part-time work. We all, we obviously have different understandings of showing up for everything, because that's why I supported the per diems, because of stuff like Alberta municipalities, and I don't just say that because I'm the president. It is valuable work. The stuff I brought home from FCM was completely valuable, and I have a very long report to share with you all. Going to conferences like Alberta Parks and Rec or Alberta Economic Development, those are really important things. Much as much as showing up for the pride thing today was great, it's stuff that you do that you can bring back and and save your residents money, bring new ideas back. It's not just about the, you know, the public appearances. So honestly, the six of you, this doesn't affect me, but the six of you knew what you were getting into when you ran and to to now change it from fifty-five to seventy plus per diems is completely against everything the remuneration committee recommended, a hundred percent. That's a jump in salary that I can't believe what you would even consider trying to defend publicly. So this is this is against everything, I believe, in 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 public service. So Counselor Hughes to close.
Thank you. Initially, I was bringing this forward as an either or. And so it was actually supposed to be in place of the per diems, would have been easier for administration, would have been a lot less confusion. So and I was prepared to bring it forward first, and then somehow through all of it came through second. And so I thought, well, I'll just bring it forward anyway, because I actually think that we have actually I just, I don't think we should talk about the remuneration committee and the recommendations at this point, since we only actually took two of them. Out of all the lists they gave, we've agreed to two. We didn't agree to what's the number is in twenty twenty-five. We didn't agree to anything else except for the two that we just passed a few minutes ago. Everything else was changed. And we did vote on our own salaries because we just voted on the per diems. So you can't have it both ways. If you don't want to get paid the seventy thousand, if you think the next council is worth eighty-six and you're not, so be it. But and also, I'm just saying that we're full-time does not change the fact that we are working full-time hours today. The committee did not say that we think that there will be full-time hours in two and a half years. The committee said there's full-time hours today. And that we are recognizing it for that time. So if someone chooses to not make it full-time hours, that's their choice. Ultimately, no matter which job you have, it's your choice how much you want to be involved in the position. But I did not expect that just because it says full-time next year, next time that the city owns seven people's seats forever and can force people to do everything constantly and have no regard for the fact that this is a flexible position that is constant demands. But regardless, please do not say that we are not full-time, because we really do work those full-time hours, the vast majority of us. Or that we're following remuneration committee's suggestions, because, as I said, all but two were not followed. So the question is, do you think that this council is worth fifty-eight thousand and the next council is worth eighty-six? Or do you think there should actually be some kind of a step gap between us and that? And that's what I would suggest. And, you know, the other thing is that they'd also said that the mayor's salary was well higher than everyone else's. So I mean, we also could just reduce the mayor's salary to make it even as well. But I'm not going to go there. I'm just saying that if we actually want to do something and recognize the fact that the the remuneration committee said that based on their knowledge, that's what it was worth. And now all we argue is the start date constantly. And what they knew from the information they had at the time, that's what they said it was worth. And so that's what I was suggesting we do. The per diems are actually a completely different debate in many ways, because the per diems have come and they have gone and come and gone over the years. And the salary has not changed based on the per diems. So the per diems are its own entity actually unto itself. And then what we do for the salary is the salary, and that's how it has been up to this point, and that's how it should actually continue now. And just so you know, I have nothing on my vote screen to do this. Sean, it's completely reset. That's it. Thank you.
Call for the vote. You can just verbally say it. Oh. Everyone else's screens are working? That's why we have to have IT in here full-time. Voting's closed. That motion fails with Counselor Bremansky, Broadhead, and Hughes in favor. All right. We are moving on now to the trail maintenance budget. Nine point two. I have, it's a council motion from Counselor Hughes. So we needed to get this done before we approved the RMR budget. So that's why it's in front. So Counselor Hughes, I'll get you to just read it into the record and we'll open it up for questions.
The trail maintenance budget is returned to the original budget of two hundred seventy-five thousand for twenty twenty-four.
All right, any questions of either Counselor Hughes or administration? Counselor Mackay, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to confirm to, this is to administration. In the background, it identifies that the twenty twenty-four trail program was focused on just engineering and design only and was it's not putting it at risk. It was, can you give me a little bit more clarification in relation to that? So was the idea that just that you were going to use the fifty thousand dollars just to do design? And then I see no subsequent years, it's always going back to two seventy-five, two seventy-five, two seventy-five. So this was just one year interim. No work, not no major work's going to be impacted. It's however you are going to be working on engineering design. Can I get clarity on that?
Absolutely, Counselor. You've got Donnie and Dean Schick online. I'll refer to them.
Thanks, so thanks, Counselor Kilic. Oh, sorry, Counselor Mackay for the question. I will pass that to Dean. The understanding is there's always construction carry-forward budget that we would be using, and Dean can explain what portions of it that he's anticipating for twenty twenty-four.
Sorry, through you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, absolutely. The the intent was that we would focus focus on engineering design for the next priority project. So there wasn't an expectation that we would be addressing any construction necessarily in the year. However, focused on the the locations that we've investigated to say are the next sites present a little bit more potential challenges. As an example, one of them kind of has a is in close proximity to a retaining wall. So there's consideration that we want to focus on that. Give ourselves time to do some good design work associated with that. And there's a larger section as well that very site-specific, but we're we're up against some very large and trees that we're trying to ensure that what we do in the area doesn't impact those as well as gives us sustainable results in regards to the trail repairs themselves. So a little bit more effort in regards to the next sites for design work and considerations with no anticipated construction.
In twenty twenty-five, there is still always ongoing work, I mean, there are overlap work. So potentially, there would be overlap work from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. Is that correct or no?
Our objective is to finish the twenty twenty-three program in twenty twenty-three. So I'll I'll give myself a high five when we finish the program. So I won't say never and anticipate that there could be carry-forward, but we never enter a year anticipating that we want to deliver carry-forward.
All right, yeah, that's anticipated. I guess it was just sometimes things happen. But right now, understanding and just going further into the background, there's no locations identified as condition rated number five. And if something came rose to the front quite quickly, you you could bring it back to council in relation to to that or or have you ever, in your experience, ever seen something go from a three to a five?
Actually, as an example, through you, Madam Mayor, we have seen some emergent work repairs. One, actually, I'll give an example where we just had some emergent work performed on a trail in proximity to the Trestle Bridge with a fairly large oil and kind of failure. And fortunately, we were railed to collaborate with our public operations group, and they helped us out, and we addressed it with some engineering and considerations. So I guess absolutely, if an emergent situation were to arise, as with any asset, we would be in front of council proposing a project, any necessary work that funding or considerations that could be done to reallocate prioritized, you know, response. Then we would do so internally and more, you know, let the council know as information or funding was required, we would be in front of council giving the background and information, making the request.
Thank you.
Counselor Kilic.
Thank you. I think I direct this question through Mr. Fletcher to to Mr. Schick. The the map that was attached said that there were some small areas of trail that were could be looked at as priority number four. And just if you could give me some clarity as to what is the River Crest Trail Park is, I I walk that trail quite frequently, and I must admit, I I know there's an old trail section there that probably should have been removed many years ago. But the actual main current walking trail is in pretty darn good shape. It it what 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 are we looking at there?
Through Madam Mayor to Counselor Kilic, what you've just described is the exact location that we're after. The the location, the main walking trail is is adequate. However, that portion that is, it veers kind of towards the river, south of the the main trail, is a portion that's reached a state of necessary repair that there's some, you know, risk and liability with leaving it. And it doesn't propose any actual connectivity or benefit to the network. And so our scope of work sees it being removed.
Okay, thank you. That totally makes sense. Thanks. I follow-up question, sorry, follow-up question. So removing that that old beat-up trail wouldn't be, even though it's in bad shape, which I totally agree with, is it wouldn't be a priority. Like, we, it could be done at any could be done next year or the year after. It's not it's not causing any harm leaving it there.
No, through through you, Madam Mayor, Counselor Kilic, that's that's correct. If if the trail were a standalone site to which users had to go through it, we would probably be suggesting it may be a more of a risk and liability. However, being that it's a secondary alternative route that really isn't on the main alignment, it it doesn't really put it at that level of prioritization. So that's one of the reasons why I would be suggesting if it if it were the main trail, we would probably not have pulled it from the list and suggested it could be deferred.
Yeah, thank you. That's perfect, perfect answer. Thank you.
All right, I see no more questions. Counselor Jolly, you're good? Okay, Counselor Hughes, I'll accept your motion. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I have, we have no say on which part of the trail is going to be fixed or not fixed. And ultimately, what's decided that budget always, not always is what materializes twelve months later. So what we think is now may not be what is tomorrow, because we're actually deciding this for what will be repairs in probably eleven months from now. But when I saw that the budget was being decreased by the two hundred seventy-five to by two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, just because another line item was being increased. It doesn't have to be a zero-sum game on this. And I want to make sure that the trail maintenance budget is sufficient to actually handle the needs each year. If they don't, it can roll over, as it has in previous years, and address other issues. But this is one of our most utilized assets. People love using these trails. It's like everyone's like, let's go for a walk along the trail. We have eighty-something or ninety-plus kilometers now trail. And I would like to just have that money available so that we can make sure that we have the proper maintenance. I was surprised when they came back and said they didn't have anything that was rated level five, because just a few years ago, we had a lot rated as level five. But we do have seven locations in level four, which is still means that it's a significant safety, it functional concerns may be present. So with seven locations, there is certainly something there. Level five is like urgent, urgent. There's like a red light flashing next to it. Level four still means it needs to be addressed. So I would like to see have that money available so that if the staff do have the opportunity, they can do it. Simple as that. And it's not going to be a tax increase, as everyone might be home watching. But it's it's just going to be about less money to put into the growth budget, but it will actually at least make sure that we have sufficient funds to handle it. I don't want to see this go down and have less of a priority, and then we have to do compensation and catch up. And the staff can only do so much each year, and then it just they can't actually do it, even if we give them extra money on top of it. So giving a consistent amount of money every year allows this to happen. And like I said, we don't know exactly where it's going to go, but we do know in twenty twenty-four, we have, Dean has an idea where it might go or where he's thinking at this point. But I just think that this is an important enough amenity in our in our community that we need to give it the proper amount of money that's normally being given. It's not an excessive amount of money to make sure it's being properly maintained. That's it.
Anyone else on debate? All right, I'll call for the vote then. Voting's closed. And that motion passes by majority with, sorry, Counselor Mackay, Counselor Kilic, and Mayor Heron opposed. Counselors, no, I was going to go to the rest of the council motions, but I'm not. So that's nine point two done, nine point three, which is now we need to incorporate that into the RMR. Can we do that on the fly? Okay, all right. I have Suzanne Finley written down, but is there a presentation?
No, there's not here.
She's not even here?
She she's here, but there's no formal presentation.
No formal presentation. All right. So is the motion now as amended? Ten-year municipal RMR capital plan as amended, is that what the motion now reads? I'm seeing a nod from Cheryl.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Any questions on the RMR budget? Discuss it at committee. Does someone want to make the motion? Counselor Hughes, go ahead.
So can you put that up on the screen? Because it's not what I can read. On my on my screen's not the same as your screen anymore, and it was all ready to go.
It's on page thirty-eight of our package.
I know, but it's okay, okay, just say as amended, that the twenty twenty-four ten-year municipal RMR capital budget provided as an attachment to the June sixth twenty twenty-three agenda report as amended be approved. Perfect. And that the following postponed motion be approved, that putting this up here, that
We need a new number, so.
Yeah, I think it is.
That's the updated number.
That the PM twenty-four zero one, that the twenty twenty-four municipal RMR capital budget of twenty-four projects be funded in the amount of eighteen million, six hundred ninety-three thousand, five hundred dollars.
Right. Any opening comments?
I did have something to say, so I want to put for the motion. So there's several BRS I had that we just got some of the information back today. So this is a heads up, I might be putting something forward for RMR as a growth, just so that we have time to get the proper backgrounders in place, and I can think of the wording if I do need to want anything for it. So the RMR budget, while we're putting this to close today, may still have additional motions come fall. Yeah, that's it.
And the desk will be in the fall.
Pardon?
The desk will be in the fall.
The desk may, if we debate the desk, it'll be in the fall.
Yeah. All right. Call for the vote. Vote is closed. Passes unanimously. Now we're cruising council. Counselor Hughes, you want to continue on with our ten-year utility budget as well?
Sure.
Thanks.
Let me go and go for some wins here. That the ten-year utility RMR capital plan provides an attachment to the June sixth twenty twenty-three agenda report be approved, and the following postponed motion be approved, PM twenty-four zero two, that the twenty twenty-four utility RMR capital budget of thirteen projects be funded in the amount of twenty-one million, nine hundred eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Anything on that?
No, I think this is pretty straightforward. So this is just to close this part of the debate, and I'm looking forward to guys can get started and get some estimates going. Guys can get started and get some estimates going and uh keep our utility rates and lines working. That's it. Thanks.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed. Passes unanimously. In hindsight, that should have been on consent. Sorry, guys. But yeah, but the utility could have been there. Uh, the next agenda item was ten point one, the EMRB briefing that was approved on consent. The motion was that the June sixth two thousand twenty-three report entitled Edmonton Metro Region Board briefing be received as information. Uh, Larry Lexick Field uh artificial turf replacement was on consent. Uh, Council Kilic pulled it off, but I was going to do anyway. So I'll. It I assume there's no presentation when it's on consent, um unless you tell me otherwise, Mr. Fletcher. Uh, so I'll just go to Council Kilic for whatever reason he pulled it off.
Uh, yeah, thank you. It's a question of clarification that um the proposed budget. Uh, and then we received a uh. Notice that we had received the IC IP uh funding, which we're very grateful for uh and the people that. Applied for that grant. It basically is another hu- eight hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars for. The uh artificial turf replacement and some money for connect. So I think. Um, how how does that affect the budget that we're asking for here today, the budget increase?
Yep, thanks, Councilor. I think I've got, yeah, both are already both of Jay and Ann are online. I'll defer to Ann then Jay to speak to that. Thank you.
To the mayor of council, um, in regards to the funding. The recommendation that we would have at this point would be capital reserve, just to have a definitive funding source, but. That's just um like a placeholder and then we always ensure that grant maximization is in use. So the ISIP funding, um, there's no further money that we can apply for. But there was also partial application for the MSI so that we will ensure that we look at maximizing. So the original source was was partially ISIP funding and MSI funding. So what we ask for today is just a a tough source that we know we can have in place. Outside of the budget cycle, we always ask for capital reserve. And then after the process is done, we'll look to ensure if we can maximize any grants and if so, we utilize those. Does that answer your question?
I didn't, maybe I didn't ask a question properly. Sorry, is that? Is is the money that we're getting through the grant, will that then return back to the capital reserve once we get the money from the grant? Or is this these two dollar amounts put together for the field replacement?
So the initial um grants that we receive will go to funding the project that was initially um recommended. And then the additional ask, we would use capital reserve and then see if we can maximize any of the additional funds, which we could MSI, but no longer ISIP. Does that make sense? So the original grant will be applied to the project?
But but I think, and and correct me if I'm wrong, the ask in here is for the full amount. Um, so that we've got a guaranteed funding source for the full amount. We would then maximize the grant to mitigate that. We wouldn't draw on it uh because we would maximize the grant funding. Um, so the bottom line is we're ensuring asking for the full amount to be guaranteed of the budget. And I defer to to Ann to make sure that was correct.
So we ask for the full amount and then when we get the grant money after the fact, it goes back into.
It would it would offset that. However, the accounting works, that's correct, Council, whether it went in in because we'd already spent it or we got it in time that we could spend it. That that's the accounting piece of it, but it would mitigate the uh the city funds um that would be drawn upon, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
It's great. Thank you.
Sorry for being uh slow on the question asking.
That's okay. Uh, my only question that I had was, I feel like this is, this is not a unique situation that we're going to be getting this kind of a request. More and more frequently because of the cost of materials due to inflation, um, whether it's borrowing, mostly inflation. What's the process that you go through as administration when you? When we see that these, the this is going to happen more and more. When do you say, whoa, we need to delay this? Because that my question is, can this be delayed? I know it says that there's that the field is is deteriorating, but we have to make choices in this climate of fiscal strict. What that's that that the grant was my question and I'm more of a process of of, oh, I think Mr. Hill, so I'm talking about, I think you do too. What's the thought process about bringing this word to council and ask for money or let's just delay this and and save the money for a better time?
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. I'll I'll ask Jay perhaps to comment on that, but I think um. It it's not a self fulfilling prophecy, right? Each uh each specific element, especially when there's a cost overrun is looked at. And that calculus is done to say, should we ask for more money, given the the nature of this? In particular, the grant was a big piece that.
Okay.
Factored into this for sure. Um, but it's not a given that just because there's a cost overrun will come to council. We do look at that. But Jay, perhaps you can add some additional fidelity to that.
Uh, yeah, thanks uh through the mayor. Yeah, so a couple of things. One with this one, because ISIP was applied to this, there was only a certain amount of projects that we could actually apply. ISIP two, so this is one that met the the requirements of ISIP. So we're getting a large portion paid for by ISIP on this one. Uh. So from that perspective, um, there is risk if we delayed this one, that we'd have to try to find another uh project that would fit into the ISIP model. Uh, and allow us to fund that project instead. Um, so there is risk there. It was a bit of a challenge, I think, working with finance on finding different projects throughout our our different divisions. Um, that met the terms of what ISIP needed to qualify for those grants. Uh, on the other side, um, I do have Louise here as well as as wrecking parks. Um, they can talk about the condition of the field and uh. As well as booking requirements uh with the user groups. So I can pass it to Louise first and she can talk about some of the situations with the existing field.
Uh, thanks, Jay. Um, and through the chair or through the chair. Um, so in regards to delaying this, so the field had uh an eight to ten year lifespan and was put in in oh eight and opened in oh nine. So beginning about seven, about two thousand seventeen, we were actually starting to have to do some rather serious repairs. And in nineteen, had to do significant repairs in several tens of thousands of dollars worth um to just bring it up to. Um, a standard that was manageable, but we've now exceeded with two separate reports. It's it's life cycle. We have well extended. Um, in nineteen, it was at its its max. Uh, the the what the problem is underneath, the rubber crumb has deteriorated to the point that we have to do compaction testings. And there are standards we have to meet with those compactions and we are getting too hard. And what that means, the the users now are starting to see the effects and it creates what's called an unsafe condition because the field is too hard. Um, and on top of that, the actual fabric itself, we are starting to lose the fibers. They are wearing down. Uh, and so you've created hard spots in some areas on the turf while you still have soft spots in the areas that aren't managed. So um, if we delay it, we could continue to try and repair it, but it it is. Reached its useful or past its useful life cycle that we're we're starting to worry about the safeness and the liability.
So so if I could just add to cap that I think, you know, certainly administrators' recommendation would be not to defer this particular project. Um, but I think to your wider point, there is a risk assessment done on each of these, right? And ultimately, can we accept risk to defer it because of cost overruns? Those discussions are had each time this happens.
Uh, yeah, I I assume that um. And and that explanation about the crumb and the softness and hardness helps because, you know, appearance, it looks fine, but. Um, okay, I I wasn't really intending to delay this. I just wanted to ask a question. And I think it's also important for the public to know that if it's approved in the budget and goes over, you don't automatically bring it to council. Uh, sorry for pulling it off, but we both did, Council Kilic, so maybe I can turn to you to make the motion?
Okay.
That the budget for project four-two-three-eight-one-zero Larry Olonek Field Artificial Turf Replacement be increased. By one hundred and twelve thousand seven hundred for a total budget of one million. Thirty-seven thousand nine hundred to be funded from the capital reserve.
Thank you for that. Uh, any debate on it?
Uh, it's just to say that it's um good to to have this brought forward as a safety issue. Um, not being a football player, uh, the the field looks good, but uh, you know, falling on it and getting tackled on it and. And uh, falling in a hard spot versus a soft spot, I guess, uh, is uh. Could be dangerous to uh to players from both our our local teams and out of out of town teams. And we want to keep this field in in good, safe operating condition and uh. Uh, the key thing is that it's already been extended past its its logical uh life of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. So we're kind of already pushing the the envelope and this has now come to a point where. Uh, pretty much has to be replaced and probably a short window to replace it while still keeping it operational and safe. And we also have some uh government funding that we can uh use to to help lower the overall impact uh of the cost of this project. So I think uh it it's a good way forward and timely.
All right, I see no more people chiming in, so I'll call for the vote. Voting's closed and that passes unanimously. Uh, on-demand transit service, it was myself who pulled it off. Um. I just, I guess Jay's still there, I or Will, one of you. The bottom of the report, um, page three or four of the reports, so page, I don't know, fifty-one of the package. Uh, it says, due to demand for Saturday service exceeding the capacity of book a bus and the financial analysis of operation. The decision was made to maintain the existing fixed route service for Saturday. But then it further down, it says, resulting in a net neutral operating budget, which is good without a change in service level, which is where my question comes. I I feel like this is a reduction in service level because fixed route is somewhat less convenient than the book a bus. Am I, am I hearing Wes? But maybe I'm wrong, so tell me I'm wrong or maybe I'm right. I don't know.
If I may, um, that, Madam Mayor, that is uh open for interpretation. Some people love book a bus and some people don't. And and uh with with fixed route, there is ease of use. With book a bus, it requires use of uh of a a smart smartphone and. A procedure to book that that ride. So i- it it's open for interpretation, but book a bus is very popular and it it's uh growing in popularity. And it's growing in popularity nationwide, transit agencies all over, all over utilizing uh on-demand transit. But um, as it as it stands, we uh. We would have to deploy likely more buses than we deploy and than we deploy now to meet the demand. For uh, uh, Saturday ridership.
Okay, I think I see it as a reduction in service level because those using it are the younger generation and they're. Completely adept at using the app, so they like the fact that the bus comes to them when they want it, where they want it, instead of a fixed route. Um, I think this is probably a broader conversation about running a hybrid service that maybe has more book a bus as well as fixed route. Um, as you said, it's nationally becoming popular. Wes just giggled because I just increased the budget by fifty percent. I'm going to get Wes to teach me. Anyway, uh. So I guess that's what I I was asking is, it's just economically not feasible to continue running the book a bus on Saturday.
To convert Saturday to book a bus is is uh not a saving.
Okay. That's all I had. Oh, Council Kilic, go ahead.
Yeah, it just as clarification, be- because book a bus is so popular, there's actually. Quite a number of of requests that aren't being fulfilled. Um, I can't remember the exact term for that, but um. So by going, correct me if I'm wrong, as a question here of clarification, by going to a fixed route. People that were not getting serviced through book a bus as un-unfulfilled rides. They will at least now know that they have a fixed route at a fixed time that a bus will be there. So that's where a service level to me, when I read the background or. Seemed to actually almost be better or at least equivalent to, because all those unfulfilled rides are now going to be. Filled with a standard bus. Did did I read that correctly?
Uh, Council Kilic, that is correct. They they will still have access to service through the fixed route. Which uh does not have capacity issues. The uh, the issue with book a bus is that it is very uh, is very uh uh specific. To the individual's requirement from A to B. Uh, the fixed route will still be available, but as as Mayor Heron points out. For some people, it's just not quite as convenient. But it is still available.
Okay, thank you.
All right, since, oh, Council Mackay, a question?
Yeah, I have a question and it's. I'm gonna maybe make a leap to say it's still attached to the agenda report, but you opened the door by saying, by saying this. So, I mean, we've, we're getting a lot of requests in our new areas, our new growth areas like Riverside, St. Lake. Sorry, so I know it's not directly tied to an existing service, but. Is it, is it possible to run a book a bus in those new areas that there's unmet demand? Uh, versus, you know, running, I mean, versus looking at the full costs of. Having a bus, extra buses on stuff. Could we run a temporary book a bus system into those areas?
Maybe I'll jump in there if I could, Council, and say that's an ongoing discussion administration right now as we look at the 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 trigger points and the standards for the growth. Um, the planning is ongoing and I know that there's a a motion upcoming too about a a longer term strategic plan for transit, so.
All right, sorry, sorry to drag the two conversations together. I took the opportunity to.
No, it's good. Council Jolly, your hands up.
I'm just prepared to make the motion if you're ready.
Oh, okay, sure. I was going to go to Mr. Giggly Pants who laughed at me about my question. But I will go, I would love it if you would do it.
All right, so that the agenda report entitled on-demand transit service Saturday dated June sixth twenty twenty-three be received as information.
Thank you for that. Anything to comment on?
Great report. Thank you.
That was good. It's a, it's awesome to see transit ridership rebounding. That's the best part of that whole report. Um, call for the vote because I don't see anyone else wanting to chime in. Go ahead. Motion or voting's closed. That motion passes unanimously. Next is a bylaws eleven point one, which is just third reading of the traffic bylaw. Uh, Council Kilic, you pulled it off. Uh, I'm assuming it's for voting purposes. Okay.
Yes, thank you.
All right.
Uh, just as as opening comments, Matt.
No, we don't have a motion on the floor. Yeah. Okay, Council Mackay, go ahead.
Uh, that bylaw seven slash twenty twenty-three being amendment twenty-three to traffic bylaw eighteen slash two zero zero five be read a third and hopefully a final time.
Anything to add?
Yeah, you know, and I, you know what, I'll probably add my comments in closing.
In closing, cap. Anyone else? Council Kilic?
Yeah, um, so I I just go back to my original motion on April eighteenth was to cap the age limit. Um, to uh eighteen for mandatory helmet use. Um. Age eighteen would have applied to bikes, scooters, scooters, skateboards, et cetera. Age eighteen would have aligned with provincial bylaw and capping it at age eighteen would align with other neighboring municipalities in similar situations. Our largest neighbors um with with popu- huge populations, Edmonton, Calgary. Our neighboring uh municipalities of Beaumont, Stony Plains, Ruth Grove, Erdgry, Red Deer, Lethbridge, et cetera. All have eighteen um uh as uh the mandatory age for helmets. And we have no data for accidents. We have no resident consultation. On whether they think a mandatory helmet law that's unique to St. Albert um meets their requirements or not. I think our residents are just as concerned with their. I think our residents are just as concerned with their own safety and are just as concerned with the safety of their kids. And that they can make decisions for themselves about wearing a helmet or not, especially over the age of eighteen. I, for one, I don't don't think that I know better than they do about needing a bylaw to say that they need to wear a helmet over the age of eighteen. Also, I think that we can trust our residents to make their own decisions about helmet use, especially over the age of eighteen. Just like I trust them to vote, run for public office, join the army, join the RCMP, et cetera, et cetera. Having this bylaw say all ages is putting uh, an unnecessarily uh protective bylaw in place that is very unique um to St. Albert and is not in line with provincial or neighboring communities. I think it's overreach of what is required um, for bikes, scooters, e-scooters, skateboards, et cetera. So I'm not in favor of going over and above um all of the other municipalities and provincial guidelines on what would seem as meeting safety requirements. And I'm certainly not in favor of overstepping parents and adults' uh ability to make their own decisions, whether they want to wear a helmet or not. So I'm not in support of of this particular bylaws. It's currently worded for all residents to wear helmets.
Thank you for that. Anyone else on debate? Councilor Meska, I'll ask you. You're the one who delayed third reading. You, have you received everything you need to proceed?
I think I've mentioned most of my comments. And again, this motion ended up being something far different than what was originally presented. You know, we've added traffic changes to it. So it's it's sort of morphed into something that was not the original intent. So um, again, I won't be supporting it. It's it's a a motion out of control is how I see this one. Thank you.
But my question is, you delayed this for two weeks for certain reasons.
Again, Council Killick had comments. There's people that have had comments in the public as well. Unfortunately, nobody came to counsel, but I mean, we're, we're, we're actually the the feedback I got from individuals of the public is that um you know, we're, we're deciding that we know better than all of them. Everybody does a great job and we're penalizing them with more bylaws and more penalties. So um, that's where I stand on it.
Uh, who made this motion? Councilor Mackay did, yes. Anything to close? Yeah.
Thanks. So I was in traffic back in it was this century, but I was in traffic when the seatbelt legislation came in. And when the helmet legislation was for motorcycles also changed. And people at that time had real similar arguments is what I'm hearing this evening. That I know better. I can make the call and decision because it's my health, um, my child, my vehicle. That is um the, you know, the one that I'm taking responsibility for. When in reality, it's interesting, you know, when you look at the stats and it's, so it didn't take much of a Google search to actually present stats around helmet use. And interestingly enough, probably because of the pandemic and maybe without real statistical analysis, which should probably be coming in the next few years. But across Canada, uh, just a real quick Google search, search, hospitalization for cycling injuries increased twenty five percent. And hospitalizations for cycling related brain injuries increased thirty six percent uh, over that and just over the last couple of years. In Alberta, the numbers are much more drastic with fifteen percent of all cycling injuries in Canada being reported in the province and emergency department visits for cycling incidents, rising forty eight percent from the previous year, up thirteen thousand from eight thousand seven hundred and thirty four. So you don't have to look much. And I mean, it's interesting that we have two firefighters, paramedics in the chambers today. And I'm sure if we were able to ask them as to whether or not how many motorcycle or motor or cycling or injuries they see, I mean, maybe they could even add more to their collision because I know in my own personal life and my professional life, I know that um you mitigate risk wherever you can because you save so many costs downstream uh, that have big impacts on all of society. So I mean, even if you look at trying to make comparisons to other communities, I mean, we allow uh our scooters and our bicycles and our e-bikes to ride on a sidewalk. Edmonton, you don't do that. Spruce Grove, you don't do that. Stony Plain, you don't do that. South Corner County, don't try doing that. So um, let's not try and say that we're all under one big dome and that just because these communities have it, we don't have it. There's lots of things that are different about communities. And matter of fact, the fact that we care just elevates our community even a little bit higher. And I've certainly not gotten any feedback from any of the residents that this is wrong. I mean, I gotta admit, I see residents every day, kids over the age of eighteen or, I mean, young adults over the age of eighteen. I see kids that are under the age of even twelve riding. Matter of fact, I saw the other day, I saw an e-scooter. I saw a parent without a helmet riding with a kid. I didn't see two kids. I saw another kid without a helmet. I mean, that goes against it. So I mean, just like, we're not going to catch everybody speeding. We're not going to catch everybody not wearing a seatbelt. But it's all about being able to educate, being able to identify and being able to take that opportunity to let our residents know. So I mean, I I respect the decisions. I mean, I do, everybody's, but we know that helmets save lives. And if we can, even in in a bylaw, if we can encourage our residents to wear a helmet, then what, what, like, I there's really no harm in this, no harm whatsoever. And we're not stepping on anybody's individual freedoms. We're not um, um, making our play, our community, a place that people aren't going to want to live in. So I I I just don't, I don't see those arguments. I I see this as an opportunity to to teach our young people, to train our young people, and also to educate our young people that this is the proper way of doing it. I mean, I've got tons more statistics, but I think I made my point.
Thank you. Call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that motion passes with Councilor Mancek and Council Killick opposed. Time is it? Almost five. You guys ready to keep going? Uh, we're into council motions now. Council Jolly, another one related to next term, I guess.
Yeah, Mayor Heron, would you mind if we delay this to a future council meeting? I've got a family commitment later tonight, and this is not at all urgent. It's twenty twenty four work.
We can absolutely plan that for another night.
Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, Councilor Mackay, your next one. Don't think it's going to be too, too long. Come on, go ahead.
Do you want me to read it?
Schedule. Yes, go ahead. I'm just ready. Reschedule for Council Jolly's.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Uh, twenty twenty four, twenty thirty two growth plan addition. That the development of a business case for a new police facility be added to the twenty twenty four, twenty thirty two municipal growth capital plan.
All right, before I accept that, I'll open up to questions. Do you have any or anyone else of administration or Council Mackay? Seeing none, I'll accept your motion.
Um, you need me any opening comment?
Yeah, unless you don't want to.
No, I, I'll be, I mean, I mean, I I think administration even identified the importance of this in the debt strategy because it was included in some background material around potential that this may be coming forward. But I mean, we also just recently had the Maloney and Boot, uh, Boot Bodri buildings um, uh, come to our attention and we saw the cost escalations impact actually some of the needed necessary repairs and also um uh ongoing kind of commitments to safety that is required in our, in our police contract. So I mean, but we had to scale that back to just the utmost necessity. So I think we can clearly see that the writings on the wall and that by twenty twenty seven has identified both in the backgrounder and all that, that like we are like we are living on borrowed time in relation to our policing policing facilities. Yes, there's a lot of unknowns. There's potential uh, other um, you know, decisions that have to be made at a anything at a different level and maybe further down the road in relation to our municipality. But that doesn't stop us being prepared to plan. And recognizing all this does is ask administration to prepare the business case and put it through the prioritization matrix framework that is already in existence. So this doesn't automatically place it into a budget. It just puts it on to the um uh, municipal growth capital plan. And it brings it in into uh into the process. So that's why I think it's, I just think it's important because we're, we're fast going to be needing a police facility because of contract needs, but also just potential growth, but also potential other decisions.
All right. See no one chiming in. Is my new, oh, Councilor Mancek, go ahead.
I do have a few comments on this one. Uh, thank you, um, Council Mackay for bringing this forward. And I I understand your intent in this one, but I'll go back to um, we haven't even, you know, completed the renovation at Bodri Place and the police building renovation, and it's already increased in cost. And it was to hold us till twenty twenty seven. And at this point in time, we're unsure of, you know, the changes that might come in the policing service or whatever. So I understand your intent of this, but I believe it's premature again. And I would like to see um it postponed a little bit further down the road, at least until after the um the renovation of the current building is um completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Hughes.
Um, yeah, I'll support this. And and just for clarification, like, all it's doing is going into the ten year growth plan. So there's no commitment. Uh, it could easily be explicit twenty twenty three, too. And then it could also be rolled back in following years, depending on the level of what comes forward. So the growth plan is um many ideas, many of which do not actually materialize that are being listed there as things that we'd love to have if we have the money, but it's not a commitment that we're going to do it. But it does put a placeholder so that it is in the discussions in future years, not necessarily next year, the year after, but somewhere on the table about if or when it can happen. So um, I intend, that's the intention of the motion.
Um, and my comments were a quick scan of the backgrounder. Administration believes that the planned renovations will be tolerable. Uh, will provide tolerable accommodations for our police up to two thousand twenty seven. So I entirely support this. I have a feeling administration would have probably brought this forward anyway um, in the tenure plan, but let's get it going. Let's get it through the process and we may or may not fund it in the future, but I think we should probably have the project in front of us. Anything to? Oh, Council Jolly, go ahead.
Thank you. I just, great addition. It's our job really to be planning decades ahead and and this does that. So thank you.
Anything to close?
No, I just like the word tolerable, too. It's nice I see it in my personal life and now I hear it in my professional life.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed. That motion passes unanimously. Uh, Council Hughes, disc golf.
That administration complete an assessment, including costs, partnerships, impacts, and pros and cons for potential occasions for a smaller or beginner level permanent disc golf course, including retained Lang Home Disc Golf Course October thirty first, twenty twenty three.
But you're changing the date.
Oh, sorry, by Q one, twenty twenty four.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. All right. Uh, any questions on this motion? Council Killick?
Um, yes, is is the intention then that we would keep Lang Home open? Um. While we're doing this study, potentially looking for a new location or even maybe staying where it is?
I can tell you, it's okay. Um, we already voted a couple meetings ago to actually have it open for this full season. So this is about bringing it forward to discuss for the following season. And so, yeah, Lang Home is still operational for this time.
So disc golf doesn't really have a season. It's open year round.
Okay.
Uh, well, it's, it's open.
Go ahead.
Again.
Yeah, and I know we've got Danielle online, but essentially the the infrastructure would remain in place at Lang Home, um, pending a determination on the way ahead. So Lang Home would be ineffective operational. Danielle, did you want to chime in on that?
Sure, I've got Miss Wild on the line as well, but typically we would keep this open to the rest of this year. Um, Amanda, can you confirm, though, are we taking it out in the winter? Because it was, uh, the, it was intent to take the infrastructure out in the wintertime.
Uh, through the chair to uh, Council Killick, the Lang Home site is a year round site. Uh, so the infrastructure would remain in place until we had further decision from council. Uh, Kingswood is a seasonal site to accommodate the cross country ski season. Um, so that one will be taken down um when we have snow.
So so yes, it stays operational um as we do this work to identify the future for that, as a motion, yes.
Right through twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, potentially. It'll, it'll be fully operational. That's what I'm hoping. It, I just want to confirm that.
So to confirm through the chair that we would keep it intact then until we come back in Q one of twenty twenty four. Um, and then we're currently working on the Kingswood one, which would be a seasonal facility as indicated by this file.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I see no more questions. I'll accept your motion. Go ahead.
We can do this briefly. I I think this is just about discussing whether or not we can have a beginner course. Uh, we're keeping Lang Home on the table, but I also just wanted to do administration options in case they found a more suitable location that we could explore that. Um, the fact that Kingswood is actually seasonal is all the more reason why it would be good to have a a year round course available. So this is just about how we can actually make it happen and just see where we can go with it. That's it.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed and that passes unanimously. Thirteen point four is customer service center. The Council Hughes, that's yours as well. Go ahead.
Yes, um, Janice, can we just change that number from eight thirty to eight? Um, in the motion. So the first thing I guess I have to do is the twenty one day notice the motion requirement is section one nineteen nine of the procedure bylaw be waived?
Uh, I'll accept that. Do you have any comments on why do you want to waive this?
Um, up until ten days ago, this wasn't a necessary requirement because twenty one days was what we, I gave. So this is about, uh, but the reason why I still need to go on this date is because there is a time sensitive on here. I have it coming effective June nineteenth. And um, I just think that if we're going to do it, we need to give administration time to adapt to it. And this is the most time that I can possibly give them between the two meetings.
I appreciate that second part, but up until ten days, nothing has changed. It was the procedural bylaw, it was the procedure bylaw.
Well, I was able to do motions twenty one days on, on meeting to meeting, and I didn't have to do this.
I just don't want you to accuse our staff of anything because she was following exactly what our bylaw says. But it is important, though, that you want to do this for June nineteenth for the tax season. Is that essentially?
Yes, I think that if we're going to make the changes, it would be good if we did it before the super busy season hits. And so that's why I'm putting forward June nineteenth so that there is some time to happen in there. And I I don't want to put it forward and have the debate on June twentieth.
Yeah.
And then have no time for administration to be able to accommodate it. So that's why I just think if we're going to do yes or no, we should have an answer to administrations to them later.
Agreed. Call for the vote. Unless anyone else has a motion on waving. Okay, see none?
This is just the waving.
Call for the vote. There we go. Voting's closed and that passes unanimously. Okay, so second part.
I'm going to just change the time from eight thirty to five to eight to five, since that was the hours before.
Yeah, and she's, they've got it.
Yep, I'm just telling, um, council so that when I read it quickly, you're still all following. That the city improves its service level from, for the customer service center, including taxation and utilities on the main floor, a smart place to eight thirty to five P M. Monday through Friday, excluding statutory holidays, without incurring a tax increase, the changes to be effective June nineteenth, twenty twenty three.
All right, before I accept it, I've got uh, Council Mackay with a question.
Yeah, just to administration, I know you, in your background, you identified average customers visiting per day. I mean, that's average. Um, I think how ma- how about like during tax season, do you see that that number explodes or like goes to eight or does it go to twenty eight? Do we know?
I'll ask Ann Victoria to chime in. Uh, I'll ask Ann Victoria to chime in.
Through the mayor to council, um. We haven't been tracking specifically. All the other periods, we've seen that same reduction. So that average of outside is. Or between is the initial in the same report. In tax season, it's up slightly, but there's still been a reduction. So we saw a reduction even before COVID and then um patterns change in between COVID. So. The there is still quite a reduction. So it would um still be a recommendation to have the reduced hours.
We still maintain the Dropbox at the front of uh St Albert Place?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Any more questions? I have one as good. Go ahead. Yeah.
Um, okay, so the staff that are working those three desks, do they go home at three o'clock?
Through the mayor to council, no, they do not. Um, there is an increase in the other forms like the telephones and then there's re- reconciliation. So. There is other duties being performed.
Okay, but they are they are actually there between eight o'clock and five o'clock, right?
Yeah, and it's just one F T.
Uh, well, we have all three desks closed, though. So the the when the last budget happened and it was reduced, it was just for the customer service center, but then there were partitions. Between taxation and utilities and customer service. Now it's all three are closed. Right?
Yeah, that is correct.
So, okay, so I just wanted to double check. So we actually do have staff that are there. For the full time that I'm putting in for the hours. That we didn't actually cut back any any other. Any of the staff that are coming in for that day are coming in for the full day.
Um, with the exception of the staff that we reduced. After we reduced the hours, we reduced the front counter person. So that person was reduced. The there was no other reductions in any of the other areas.
And how are we handling right now that we have for the one person that's there? They still need time for lunches, R D Os, et cetera. So we are currently handling that.
Yes, that is correct. We are currently handling that coverage. Um. Currently, and that what we spoke to in the background or two. And but the additional hours if it was open would need. To wouldn't be able to be covered by that so staff.
But I'm wondering, like, there's no lunch or other breaks after three P M for that one staff person at the front desk. So. I'm just trying to. Figure out why we would need extra staffing to handle the the they don't take a break between eight and ten, or they don't take a break after from three to five.
But but they're they're performing other duties and those duties would still need to be performed by somebody if they were on the desk for those full timeframe.
The person doing the desk couldn't still do those duties?
That's correct.
If I if I could just jump in councillor Hughes as well, um, keep in mind it's not so much the difference of the lunch because the lunch is a lunch. Um, but if you're open those extra. Um, four hours a day, it's when it's when that the main person is on like vacation or sick or whatever. To have the rest of the utilities um staff and receivable staff and taxation staff have to cover all of those extra hours. We wouldn't be able to manage that with and they wouldn't be able to keep up with their regular. Duties if they were having to cover the front for all those extra hours per day. Because there's many things they can't do at the front counter um because of confidentiality. They can't. They'd actually just be sitting there waiting for somebody. Walk in um so that they can serve them and all their other duties wouldn't be able to be covered.
Are we using casual staff right now to help compensate as well for that for the R D Os, et cetera?
Currently, we're using um. Current staff, council receivable coordinator, and then we're bringing in admin staff in from assessment to cover the R D Os and vacation.
Sorry, I missed it. Sorry, just because.
So the currently uh to cover off on the breaks and the every day is the um council receivable coordinator. And then for R D Os and vacation, we're bringing in our administration from um the assessment. So it within the department to cover that those days.
Okay, so we're moving somebody over from a different department on the R D Os and on vacation days?
Yeah, we're right now covering that off with that person, yes.
And then does that person go back to their other position at three o'clock?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And they, okay. That's fine. And the other question I had is, um, so we haven't done any tallies on the numbers since twenty twenty one? On how many people are actually going in?
We are currently, I'm starting to tally again, but we've just been um, the front staff have just been tracking sometimes, but we are now tracking that. In just just previously, but they've been um, they haven't noticed any change in from when the prior. Uh, review was done. There hasn't been a large change in number of customers that have been noted.
But. But we haven't been tallying though.
No, they've just been kind of. Through counts and kind of transactions. But of course, there is um other like transactions that they're doing that are getting um. From other areas that they're doing through phone calls and online so that those aren't totally easy to track, but just through um. So them tracking it temporarily, but we have staff now working on that.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Manceky.
Thank you. Through the mayor, a couple of questions for administration. Um, the tallies that were done, they were done during COVID. Were people actually working? Um, you know, hybrid at that time when those tallies were done or were they all actually in office?
I can help out with this. Um, sorry, hi, it's Brenda here. Um, yes, this is my department. Um. It was done, uh, some of the staff were hybrid at the time because um it was August to October of twenty twenty one. So if memory serves me, we were um, some of the restrictions had been released or uh removed and front counter was open. So um, we did have to have some full time staff there, but we staggered them.
Okay, and then uh my second question, it says in the background or here that in the hours um that the front counter is closed to the public, um. The employees can um participate in team uh team building, team coordination and or attend citywide events. What kind of citywide events would they be attending?
Um, so citywide events, sometimes there can be um, was it clean up in the River Valley or the? The last one in May, um, team events can be. Um, you know, if there's a a team building like a disc uh event, you know, discover your your color. Um. I can't think of all of them, but it but it's really been beneficial for the staff to be able to have collaboration. Because then we don't have to worry that we're excluding somebody that because they're at the front coverage. You know, they're covering the front. So that's been really helpful. Um, and nobody feels that they're they're not included.
I I would just say councillor, those are not frequent events. Um, the team build opponents are relatively infrequent. Uh, but somebody who is customer service facing from eight to five never had the opportunity to attend any of those essentially in the past unless there was deliberate coverage. Um, so that is not a a frequent thing that happens, but it is important from a cohesion perspective.
Thank you.
City manager has town halls. Citywide event. Did you have one this morning? There you go. Any more questions? Uh, I just have. One and it. It goes to maybe both. You, Mr Fletcher, councillor Hughes. The backgrounder clearly says this cannot be done without a tax increase. Clearly. But councillor motion says do it without tax increase. You've given an that man going to councillor Hughes, there's an alternate recommendation that says. Yes, eight till five. Um, but the budget is increased by thirty nine thousand dollars annually. So I I feel like we're kind of caught. Can't pass yours because staff said they can't do it. Do you want to move that alternate motion?
Can I ask him one more question before I do that, Mayor? So if you were to cover the person who has the second leave and there's the vacation time, for example. Um. You don't need a full F T E to do that. You'd actually need like a point two. Um, potentially even a point one. So do we actually need a full F T E or can we do it on half an F T E? Because I I don't see how we couldn't. If we just have one person working the front desk. And then the other time is to cover off all of it, which would actually alleviate a lot of pressure on the other staff to try to compensate for it. Do we actually need thirty nine thousand or can we get away with twenty?
Through the mayor to council. So the assumption on the thirty nine thousand was based on those additional hours that were took into consideration. Eight thirty to five of breaks, R D Os, vacation. So that was two hundred fifty seven hours. So that was how that was calculated.
It's not a full F T E.
That is a.
Yeah, it's a point six three. Yeah.
Okay, then let's amend the budget to increase it by thirty nine thousand annually and see where it goes.
Okay, so you're.
So that it improves it and that the budget is increased by thirty nine thousand annually.
Okay.
And I guess to be funded this year would be a partial would be to be funded by.
Probably through stabilization reserve.
Yeah, for for twenty thousand in twenty twenty three by the stabilization reserve.
All right, any further questions? All right, go ahead councillor Hughes.
Okay. So. I have watched these desks and and I regardless of what the numbers were presented twenty twenty one, if you look at the time that it was actually being presented. Uh, for the tally results, it was in the middle of Delta. My vast majority of staff were not even in their office for the most part. So the reasons to come down were quite limited. But. I have. Seen people who want to get in after three o'clock, who get off of work early, trying to get to be able to make the payments and come to a locked door. And there's staff there that can accommodate them. And they can't because there's a locked door between them and the people that need the help. This is a service desk. We should have the service desk available, not just the front desk. Taxation and utilities has also now been affected where it was not just the one F T E. It was now it's three desks that have been affected. Because the the because the renovations. And council actually never approved the reduction of hours to utilities or to the taxation desk. And so we're actually for the thirty nine thousand dollars a year reopening three desks. Not just one to give the full accommodation for people who have. Want to pay the utilities, who have questions, who've made accommodations, try to come and did not do it within that five hour window. The reality is that whoever is working these desks is not solely sitting here in front of the desk, waiting for someone to come. They are doing other things at the same time, including the customer service desk in the front. They are working back and forth with taxation. They have other things they are given on the uh to do whenever they don't have somebody else to deal with, and they're actually quite busy the entire day. Trying to both balance this and being constantly interrupted with other people coming in. When people do come in, they appreciate having it open. And I think that this is. I personally think we do not need the extra thirty nine thousand, but if it's what's necessary to actually accommodate and offer a full services to the public, I'm willing to renege on that. But I I honestly, I am confident that what we. We need to be offering a service to the public that's available for during all working hours. And we do not need to have it where they come in at three oh one and they cannot get be accommodated. It's difficult sometimes for people to get off of work even for four o'clock. And now we need them to be off at three. You have to leave at two, which means basically they can't do it. They do a whole afternoon off just so they can come into an office. And regardless of whatever the tallying votes were in the thick of Delta, if you just stand out there and watch, there are people going to that front counter. Pretty much every five minutes, there's somebody coming in, being dealt with. Then the person has a couple of minutes to themselves try to do something that came up and then another person comes in. This also handles deliveries. It handles the cash that goes back and forth. And having it open and having continuous service is actually very important. I understand that we have it where we say if you have it this hour is now, now we go to. Security or something like that. There should just be a consistency. If you have the store open, you have the store open. And this is a a place where people actually give us money and try to make amends for their basic service levels and we have a reduced hours. So um. And when you look at forty thousand dollars. And uh we need to find one point two million dollars to save one percent on your taxes. So tax increases are about forty three dollars for a one percent. So that means that a hundred and twenty thousand dollars is a four dollars. And for this entire thing, you're looking at a total change of about a dollar twenty a year in your taxes. That we are saving, but inconvenience in the public at the same time while we do it. Um, and quite frankly, I think that. Just. From observation, you know, asking the taxation department to compensate for all these other hours. That are currently in that five hour window that we're doing for that one staff person puts an extra toll on them. Because they're also interrupted in their day. So if we just went back and said, okay, we're gonna have two people that handle this or the one point six people that handle this. Then the people who are working taxation can work. Undisturbed and get their job done without having to go back and forth and worry about. Covering somebody's uh workload for ten minutes or an hour, et cetera. So I think that this would actually be a benefit to the public and it'd also be a benefit to staff. Because they could work specifically where they're meant to work and not be constantly trying to cover. For a shift in the front desk, just because we happen to cover, reduce our taxes by a what a dollar twenty a year, not a month, a year. To save money. So that's it. Thank you.
Councillor Killick.
Uh, thank you. Uh, i- i- in this regard, the city is really in a a public. Um, customer service business. It's pretty much everything we do is providing service to to customers. And in in business, there's there's two. Main rules. Number one is never never keep customers waiting. And uh, second rule, which is actually more important than the first rule, is never keep customers waiting who want to pay you money. Having these hours extended. Will provide additional hours. Uh, so the customers and our residents can come in and help. Them with their service uh requests as well as pay us money. So I'll be supporting this uh motion. Thank you.
Councillor Mackay.
Thanks. Um. You know, I'm just looking at the backgrounder and you know, and again, I they identified administration was tasked to review business processes and find cost reductions and. When they looked at the the business and I min- administration uh is actually responsible for the operational business of our. Um, of our corporation and of our community, they looked and they identified this as. Uh, an area and it is minor, but as we've all heard of heard, um. It all adds up into a larger savings if we find multiple um. Uh, situations similar to this one. I mean, I I I I'm drawn to the one. Uh, line in or one paragraph. Where it says since January twenty twenty two. Uh, customer service, utilities and taxation front end staff have noticed a continuous steady decline in the number of walk in customers and an increase in customers utilizing email. Phone or online services. Processes have also changed. There is no need for a part time revenue processor. So they've identified further um administrative and cost savings. Even if it is minor, but it has had some other benefits in relation to employee satisfaction. Uh, that we've just heard or determined recently. So, I mean, I think. I mean, for for some of our residents, particularly our elderly, I know that they particularly want to always hand in their check and they want to hand it to a specific person. And I remember during COVID standing by. The Dropbox and actually Ms McMorty actually came downstairs on one of her frequent breaks and uh actually took uh one of the um. Uh, uh residence check and actually walked it up to finance. Uh, because the individual wanted to actually give it to somebody in person. So I understand that, but I also understand that during COVID. A lot of. A lot of processes have changed. We've changed has been forced on a lot of people. Businesses have pivoted and I think our residents have also identified uh other ways of of uh. Um, working or or accessing services or that were. Non traditional or even out of their comfort zone before. So um, I'll even go back. The Edmonton Police Service has closed all of their front counters. All of their front counters. So it used to be open twenty four seven, three hundred and sixty five days. Now every one of them, if you drive in. To a front counter, it's closed. Um, so uh, there's a certainly a button on a blue phone that you can push and you can get a pretty much immediate response, but at the same time. Um, you talk about. Front facing service delivery. And I can guarantee you people going to the police station aren't giving money, but uh not usually unless they're paying warrants, but um. But you're, I think you're just seeing a big fundamental change in the way that uh service is being provided. Whether or not we agree, whether or not it's good. But honestly, looking at the numbers, um, if we're keeping it open so that there's only a a a few people a day or even an hour, um. I I'm gonna have to lean towards administration's recommendations.
Anyone else? Counsel Hughes, I'll, I'll say a few things. I've served with you for ten years, and you continue to confuse me. You are a dichotomy sometimes. I honestly can't support this motion. The biggest part of this was this council has to be in control of our taxpayers' dollars. And when we turn to our city matter and say, help us find some savings, they came to us with savings, which, which was a service level reduction, which we approved. If, if we continually overturn those, you know, the will of administration to find those efficiencies is going to diminish. For me, Counsel McKay, you were reading part of the agenda package. So we reduced the the service level from to, so now it's ten AM till three PM. No formal complaints have been received, zero. It also indicates that the number of walk-ins are decreasing. People are pivoting to more online, and it's not like we don't offer twenty four hours a day service for all of these things, whether it's paying your dog license or paying your taxes or, or whatever, your water bill, et cetera. Twenty four hours a day, you have access to that. But if we continually to increase service levels and not do our best to find those efficiencies and save a dollar here and a dollar there, our, our taxes will never be able to honestly look our residents in the eye and say, we tried. So that's why you're a dichotomy to me because you are such the, the person that I turn to for, for those efficiencies. But this one is not necessary. Counsel Hughes, to close.
Well, let me make this clear. I found six million dollars in savings last time, and I still think this is worth forty thousand dollars today. So this isn't about trying to cut costs at any measure. It's about providing the best services we can and recognizing what we can do. So I said there's no formal complaints. Where would someone complain? They get there at four o'clock, there's nothing open. Who are you going to complain to? So I guess there's no complaint. They went home upset, didn't file a formal complaint, so it's all good? I don't think so. I see that it says that the numbers have gone down, but we haven't actually done a tally. There was three weeks to provide, to do a tally, and no tally was actually done. And it's just ad hoc saying it's gone down. But if you sit there, you'll see that people are going in a lot more than seven visiting per day between ten and twelve. There's not three people coming in over the two hour period. I can assure you of that. So it's significantly larger than that. And that's not just the people coming in. It's also, we're not recognizing the full authority that's coming forward with this, with all of the packages, the money going forward, the staff communication and directional services. So someone comes in and it's four o'clock and they want to meet with somebody and they're not sure where to go. The front counter is closed. You're on your own. There are so many services that are just beyond just paying for your garbage tags that are happening here. And in addition, we have somehow closed, again, without council's record, actual approval, two other front desks because of the renovations. And said, all of it's being closed at three o'clock. The doors lock. If someone is in there at three o'clock because they got there at two fifty eight, the doors lock automatically, and they're actually have to figure out how to get out of that building then. So it is, is very much not a flexible situation for people who want to come in. I have forty percent of people in this month coming up are going to have to pay for their taxes because only sixty percent of people actually pay monthly. That's eleven thousand people that are going to be paying their taxes the next thirty days. You know, at, at one percent of that, we're talking about hundreds of people that need to be processed with one person now within a five hour period, and the doors lock at three o'clock. So I don't think that we're actually recognizing the true value of what's available for somebody to have that there. You know, I look at even like a car dealership. There's somebody there to greet you the entire time, even if the car dealership is dead and it's eight fifty five PM, they don't close the front greeting desk until the actual office is closed. So I look at, yes, there were recommendations by the previous, uh, previous administration before this presidency manager, some of which were passed, some of which did not. So just because we happened to pass one at that time does not mean that it was the absolute right decision, and all the ones that we didn't, we're now not using as an argument for why we actually passed this one. So I look at the fact that there were unintended consequences that happened because there is no cover off staff now for that one person, and now we're putting a heavier workload onto the taxation department because they actually have to now compensate for it. I look at the fact that we actually have closed three desks now, not one to the public. So if you want to try to figure what my, what I'm about, it's about value for money. And I thought we could do it without having any additional increase of budget. I still maintain that. But I'm not going to argue administration over this because I can actually see that if they do this, it takes a ton of pressure off of taxation they don't have to cover. So I would like to save taxes without actually affecting people's quality of life and reducing the hours by four hours a day for the business days affects people's quality of life. And the numbers of what, of who they are touching on a daily basis are not reflected in the tally of twenty twenty one for that period of time. So for the people who would like to be able to pay their bills, would find their way around, communicate between the staff members, do deliveries and everything else that comes in between, I think that we should be allowed to be open for the hours that we were intended to be open. And I know that the staff would love to be able to serve people after three o'clock. This is not about them wanting to close those doors at three o'clock, but they just are not currently allowed to serve somebody at three ten. And that's where the problem comes in. So for a dollar twenty a year, yes, I'm willing to consider having full operational hours. That's it. Thank you.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that motion fails with Counsel Hughes and Counsel Kilik in favor. It's five thirty. We just have one council motion left and then in the camera, so let's take a break. Counsel Jolly, you said you had a family. Like, are you be able to join us at six?
Maybe at six, but then I'd be leaving right after. So we'll see. I've got someone staring at me that we need to leave right now. So.
Okay. Well, we're, we're reconvening at six. Hope to see you then. If not, we'll understand. Okay.
Okay.
My concert at six thirty.
I don't see Council Jolly, I just checked she's not part of our participants so she may or may not join us. Excuse me. 13.5 is Old Bellrose Trail Project. Council Hughes, why don't you read it in?
That the Old Bellrose Trail project's visited and there's if there is a more affordable option than restoring to previous standard while still providing a trail space that is brought forward for council's consideration.
Awesome. Open it up for questions of our staff or of Council Hughes or of anyone. I guess I'll start, maybe this goes to you, Mr. Fletcher. The background was somewhat confusing because they're talking about what's leviable and what's not leviable. And you're pretty much saying that anything that's not included in offset levies would be increased costs, benches, whatever. So I guess my question to you, is there, is there, is there a more affordable option that?
I think any option generally above and beyond the Northeast servicing standard is, is I'd be hard pressed to find a way that that would be cost neutral. If there were savings through the Northeast standard project, then that could be incorporated into that. So that would be the way, you know, that conceivably it could be happened is through savings through the Northeast servicing project that could then be applied to some sort of different trail standard. That money, if it wasn't spent on that, would otherwise come back to the city, but anything additional intuitively, there'll be additional costs. I know that, actually, I don't know that Donnie George is still online, but.
Donnie's there. Yeah, Donnie, if we have a project such as this that comes in under what we have budgeted for and levied for, what do we do with that extra dollars?
No, the servicing is, sorry, through the chair to you. It's not the servicing is currently planned to be debt funded and then offset reimbursable through the course of the years, right? Future. So the budget is coming from debt. So if you add a trail component to the scope, of course, the debt of funding that we approve will have to incorporate that additional cost of doing the trail, which is not offset leviable, which is not money coming back, which means we have to identify a city tax-based funding for that portion of the scope, if that makes sense.
I think, Donnie, correct me if I'm wrong, but anything that's I think, Donnie, correct me if I'm wrong, but anything that's that's above and beyond the Northeast servicing level standard would not be offsite levyable. I think that that is clear. And for it to be. Cheaper or cost neutral would involve it fitting into savings that were made over the course. Regardless of the source of the money, if you look at the the overall amount that's spent. It would be because Northeast servicing was less and therefore we could incorporate the trail standard into that that delta. Otherwise, it will be added.
So we'd be taking on more debt.
Correct. That debt will be the budget that will serve that additional scope.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, you have none?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So if we were going to put it forward to having a trail that was before, it would have cost more money as well, right? Like everything we had in there would have been additional cash. The only way that it for the benches, et cetera. But it's also not an extraordinary amount of money. We're talking about. Tens of thousands of dollars or less really for a few park benches. A few, I'm looking at you, Donnie, if I'm if I'm wrong, but we're looking at a few park benches, maybe a couple garbage cans. I'm not even sure if we need to have that little partition barrier to stop. Trucks from going on there since it won't even be a road. It's not, it's not a substantial cost, right?
It is not. And then whatever we are adding as a trail standard, let's say we add a three meter asphalt trail to be the finished product at the end of the day. We have to pay for that extra because that's not existing service today. It's not just the appurtenances.
What was talked about in the discussion. Was to bring it to a road standard. Right? And so the intention is that the trail standard should be less than a road standard. So I'm trying to, like you're saying, the asphalt trail wouldn't be covered, but a road would be covered.
So if I may add a little bit more clarity, it's. It was an old rural road cross section, let's say, and must have been built on a packed mud with gravel on top. So we don't want to call it a road structure per se, that what we will put back over the years, what that trail is supporting is a very. It accesses toe of the slope, so it may very well be packed so well to call it a road standard or a well compacted walking path. So it's not a classified as a road today, so we don't have to build it to a road standard per se. But what we need is the finished. Layer on top. I don't know, the best analogy I can pull is icing on the cake, if you want to think that way. The icing that you put on, whether it's asphalt or gravel trail, has to be extra scope that Northeast servicing does not provide today.
So tell me if I'm getting this wrong, Donnie, but what you're basically telling me is that even if we pass this motion. You'll never find a more affordable option than what you're currently doing.
The total overall, there's a cost savings that we may find by not, so if you, if I think about the same analogy, the cake and the icing. The cake will act as the base, which we have to build some base there. Today to the standard of the day, and then the icing will be the extra. That will be an incremental cost that. The city has to front, front end through the debt, and then that's not reimbursable through the offset levy. Part of money. So that will affect our budget. But one other thing that I want to put forward is also the construction methodology that we may apply for the Northeast servicing also may contribute to. Whether we disturb the the road structure or not, because some areas are quite unstable slope there, so the. Construction best methodology may very well be a directional drill, which in case we don't even have to disturb the top layer. So then if you decide on moving ahead with the add an asphalt trail on top, that will be an extra piece of scope that we have to add. Even without disturbance to the ground. I would leave that for the design team as they progress through the design. That's what they have to decide on. The type of structure that we have to build and what is that incremental cost to accommodate a trail if we call it a trail. And then that'll come back in August is what we are anticipating. Should the council motion pass today, no cost to us to exploring the options of how much. Affordable can we build it? That will happen in the background. We're hoping that decision will come back in August. And that's when council get to decide, okay, should we add this incremental cost to the budget or not, or the scope or not? So you will have a couple more decision points to go forward with that. So this council motion, what it essentially does is. Give a give a direction to administration to go explore the affordable option that we can accommodate as part of the Northeast service.
Okay, so what I'm hearing then, just so make sure I got it understood correctly. Is that if the motion passes, you'll go back, you'll look to see if it is something. No, I'm not saying that there will be something. We're just going to say that there may be something, correct? And then you'll just give us an update in August, and it could be yes, it could be a no, and then we'll make a decision if we actually want to move on from there. That's. So you're saying there's a possibility, but not a guarantee. That would be fair.
Yeah, that's true.
And I would just caveat, I think it's a low possibility just to frame expectations.
Yeah, because I, Council Hughes, I don't think you were asking to go to an asphalt trailer, right?
No.
It was just sort of indicated in committee. That. There might be other options available as they progress through the Northeast servicing.
Right.
Okay.
And whether it's a. An asphalt trail or just. A trail that's just gravel. I mean, those options can also be brought forward. I just. Okay, all right, that's all I got. We can go to debate then.
I just have one quick question, I guess, to you, Mr. Fletcher, so. Anything that's not recoverable by offsite levies, you will bring back to council.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, anything frankly, that is above and beyond the scope of the Northeast servicing, absolutely.
Okay. Go ahead. I see no more questions, so go ahead.
Okay, so from what I hear from administration, they seem open to just. Looking at the potential options and letting us know if there are some potential opportunities for cost savings. And. As we know, if it does cost us money, we can always, for just so you know, Sean, my thing went out. If if it does cost us. Extra cash, it council will have to approve that. So it'll just have another discussion about whether or not it's actually an opportunity or not. And if it can be reduced in scope or in cost, I think that. We need to explore that as well, because yes, it's offsite levies, but our offsite levies are high. So anywhere that we can actually make those more palatable for people who need to build, I think that needs to be reflected as well, so. This is just about, if you see something, let us know. Give us an update in a couple of months. If the answer is no, we're expecting it. If it's yes, it's a pleasant surprise. And if it costs us extra money, we'll know how much and whether or not we want to move forward or not. So I just feel like the last meeting. There was still some. How long did it take to discussing that, going in circles, trying to figure out where to go? And I felt like we still didn't come to a resolution about whether or not. The option that we wanted to have explored, which was, could we do it in a trail for less, was satisfied. So this would give us the opportunity to just make sure that that option has been clearly described and. If if it can't be done better, we can, we'll know. But if it can be done better, I think we owe it to everyone to at least have that discussion. That's it.
Anyone else have any comments on debate? All for the vote then?
We don't have a screen here again.
Verbal. Two in favors over there. You guys are all good? Voting's closed and that passes unanimously. All right. Council Killick, you said you had a question that you could ask publicly?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just. Walking the dog down around. The Lecombe Park. I noticed that the. Sandwich board signs that were put up last year for the introduction of alcohol in the park. They're all, they were temporary signs, they were sandwich board. Et cetera, et cetera, just. They've kind of been knocked over, pushed, thrown, pulled apart. What's the plan for permanent signage for? Alcohol in in the parks?
Danielle, please go ahead.
Yeah, Manda, do you want to answer that question for Council Killick, please?
Apologies, my mute button went tiding on me. So thank you for noticing, we are in the process of. Putting permanent signage into place now that our first year of operation has occurred. So we are anticipating over the next kind of four to eight weeks, having the permanent signage designed and ready to go. And we'll, we will replace those that have bent over just with the winds. They've all kind of broken in half and we've, we're aware, so we're working on that.
Great, thank you.
And that will be at all sites, Council Killick as well, so we'll make sure to do all the sites.
I just want to make sure that nobody calls me out for drinking in the park.
All right, and I do believe there was a couple for sure notices of motions. Go ahead, you can start, because I can't remember them all, but.
So I have two notices of motion, ones you guys are aware of, and one's going to be a surprise. So that whereas new information is available regarding proceeding in accordance with Resolution AR twenty two two six three, and whereas the city has not taken any irrevocable action with respect to Resolution AR twenty two two six three that could result. In adverse legal consequences if AR two 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 six three were rescinded. Be it resolved that the following resolution AR two 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 six three approved by council on July fourth, twenty twenty two be rescinded at the regular council meeting on June twentieth, twenty twenty three. That reads the council direct administration to proceed with implementation of the recommendation three B contract secondary PSAP and fire dispatch. To an external service provider. Primary PSAP services and police dispatch would remain in the Snart Police Communication Center as outlined in the NMP. Securation nine one one dispatch delivery. Review final report attached to agenda dated May sixteen, twenty twenty two. Long and short of it is, this is to continue with in-service for fire dispatch. The second one I had, which is your surprise motion. Which came from my field trip last week. Is that administration provided report by Q four twenty twenty three outlining the costs, potential locations, timeline, other concerns. To establish a take it or leave it building using the Strathcona County Hodge Podge Lodge as a starter model for costs and operational logistics. So you're looking at me funny, Carrie, but you can always ask me more questions at the time of.
Hodge Podge Lodge.
Hodge Podge Lodge. It's a, it's a take it and leave it location where basically. You can. They've, they've built it near the recycling center. And they can, you can drop off anything that's small, no large items, they don't have the space for it, and you can pick it up for free as well. And the stuff moves in and out like crazy, and so far they have kept a hundred thousand pounds of material out of the landfill in the past three months alone.
Awesome.
So anyway, that's the notice motion, and we can debate it at that time. Thank you.
Council brought out, I feel you have one on transit.
I do, thank you, Madam Mayor. In light of the recent demise of the Edmonton Metropolitan Transit Services Commission, that administration prepare for council's consideration. A business case for the completion of a St. Albert Transit ten year strategic plan. Which reviews current service standards and their relevance to a future community needs. Details anticipated service additions to serve a growing community. Capital and equipment storage requirements, human resource requirements, and the anticipated cost to complete this strategic plan. That the business plan for for this strategic plan, plan being multiple there. Be presented in a timely fashion for council consideration for inclusion in the twenty twenty four budget.
All right, thank you for that. Did I miss any? Got them all?
Council Killick has a information request.
Oh.
I sent to him earlier this afternoon. Or this morning. It's what is the timing for paving, et cetera, of the parking lot at Lecombe Lake?
Thank you, Cheryl. I don't have it in front of me, but.
Just the gist of what you're asking.
Yeah, the timing of completing paving of the parking lot. At the Dog Park, Lecombe, Lecombe Lake Park.
All right, thank you. Is that it? Okay, I have. I don't know if you call this an announcement. But. Wes, do you remember when we were first elected, we had. I think a couple of councils from Mount Pearl.
Oh, yes.
And give us some pens?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
That was in my first term. So did you know that we have a sister city? You do, Mount Pearl in Newfoundland. So was this when you guys were cleaning up the river that you found this? So. They found this in the river. This plaque. It reads two trees symbolizing the friendship of our communities. City of Mount Pearl, Newfoundland, City of St. Albert, Alberta, July two thousand and two thousand. So we have found this. I think this is cool history. Obviously, it needs to be cleaned up a bit. But. So I think we know where the trees are, correct? Yeah, so I. I think council, we should obviously clean this up. And reinstall it where it originally was, but I will reach out to the mayor of Mount Pearl, see if they want to come and join us, and I think we should. Figure out what it means to be a sister city and how we reestablish that relationship of idea sharing and. Love of country and all that kind of stuff. It was obviously Mount Pearl was chosen for a reason in two thousand, and it's twenty three years later, and I just thought you guys might find that interesting. I'll bring it into chambers so you can have a look at it, but. There you go. I thought you.
Was that over by the children's bridge, the tree?
It was, I think it was, but was it? I thought it was by the celebration garden, like further down, but doesn't matter.
A little further on the other side of the river, I think.
Yeah, okay, but that's cool, right?
Yeah.
It's. It's super heavy. Anyway, I thought that was a little piece of history I would share publicly with you guys instead of just sending you an email. I need a motion to go in camera for a dialogue with the city manager. Council Mackay, go ahead.
Council move in camera to have a confidential dialogue with the chief administrative officer pursuant to section twenty four one A of the Freedom of Information and Privacy Act.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes unanimously. All right, we will reconvene in council lounge. Pardon?